I am hereby calling this meeting to order. Tonight is a regular session to be followed by a committee of the whole on Wednesday, August eighteenth, twenty twenty-one. Will the clerk please call the roll? You're muted. Oh, sorry.
No, it's okay. I'm sorry. I'm just having a little bit of trouble with my roll call sheet, so. My apologies. Okay, Councilmember Rallo. Okay, Councilmember Volin.
Here.
Councilmember Rosenberg.
Here.
Councilmember Scambalory.
Here.
Councilmember Sims.
Here.
Councilmember Flaherty.
Here.
Councilmember Piedmont Smith.
Here.
Councilmember Smith.
Here.
And Councilmember Sandberg.
Here.
Thank you all.
Just for point of clarification, did you get Councilmember Rallo? I think I didn't hear.
I did not.
Okay, he's present.
Okay.
I'm here. Thank you.
Ah, okay.
Thank you very much. We will proceed with the agenda summation for this evening. We'll have approval of minutes afterwards, then we'll have reports back to minutes. I do believe we have two sets that will be considered for approval this evening. Then we'll move to reports. I will remind everyone that a maximum of twenty minutes is set aside for each part of this section. And those reports are for council members, the mayor and city offices, council committees, and then public comments. Then we'll move on to appointments to boards and commissions, if any. We have legislation for second readings and resolutions this evening. It is appropriation ordinance twenty-one dash oh one to appropriate from that A R P coronavirus local fiscal recovery fund, I F A coronavirus relief fund, general fund, and Parks and Recreation General Fund expenditures for purposes that fulfill the intent of the American Rescue Plan Act in aid of the city of Bloomington's recovery from the effects of the COVID nineteen emergency. Then we'll move on to legislation for first readings. That's ordinance twenty-one dash thirty-three. Final approval to issue economic development revenue notes and lend the proceeds for the renovation of affordable housing regarding Crestmont Community, one zero zero two North Summit Street, Bloomington, Indiana. This is the Bloomington Rad Two L P petitioner. Then we'll move to ordinance twenty-one dash thirty-two to amend title weight of the municipal Bloomington code entitled Historic Preservation and Protection to establish a historic district regarding the Thomas Smith House Historic District. Then we'll move to ordinance twenty-one dash thirty-one to amend the city of Bloomington zoning maps by amending the district ordinance and preliminary preliminary plan of the Curry P U D regarding one oh five South Pete Ellis Drive, which is the Curry Curry Urban Properties petitioner. Then we'll move on to additional public comment, whereas a maximum of twenty-five minutes is set aside for this section. Then we'll deal with matters of council schedule. Then we'll have adjournment of the regular session and immediately after we'll call to order the meeting, I'm sorry, committee of the whole meeting. I will ask that I'll read this about additional public comment. Members of the public may speak on matters of community concern not listed on the agenda at one of the two public comment opportunities. Citizens may speak at one of these periods, but not both. Speakers are allowed five minutes. This time allotted may be reduced by the presiding officer if numerous people wish to speak. Okay, I do believe we have minutes to approve. Councilmember Flaherty.
Yes, Mr. President, I moved at the minutes for the special session on September ninth, twenty twenty, and the regular session on September twenty-third, twenty twenty be approved.
Second.
Thank you. It's been properly moved the second for the approval of these two sets of minutes, September ninth, twenty twenty, September twenty-third, twenty twenty. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Yes, Councilmember Volin.
Yes.
Rosenberger.
Yeah.
Scambalory.
Yes.
Sims.
Yes.
Flaherty.
Yes.
Piedmont Smith.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Sandberg.
Yes.
And Rallo.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, to make sure that was nine, has been approved nine zero. Thank you. We will now move down to reports on the agenda and we'll start off with council members and I will call on you as I see you upward and to my left, Councilmember Scambalory.
Yes, thank you. Just a bit of advanced notice. As most people know, I have monthly constituent meetings on the first Saturday of every month. In the month of September, that falls on Labor Day weekend, and so we'll be pushing that back to Saturday, September eleventh, the second Saturday. Those who wish to join, it'll be held via Zoom. Those who wish to join can do so. Go to sueforcitycouncil dot com and there's a big button there that says join. And you can click on that and that'll take you into the Zoom meeting. I'll mention this again when we meet on September first, but there's just some advanced notice. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Scambalory. Councilmember Smith.
I just wanted to give a shout out to the Habitat for Humanity Restore on College Mall Road. They do a great service and they receive furniture and other donations from the community, sell those things and then help build houses out in the community. And they're doing a wonderful job and I just wanted to give a shout out to them. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Smith. Councilmember Sandberg.
Thank you. I would just like to express my thanks to the Blue Ridge Neighborhood Association for inviting several of us to attend and be a part of their lively discussion. Part of their presentation included the representatives from Duke who came to speak to many of the constituents who have been concerned about power outages and their frequency and their length. And so that was quite informative. I was glad to be a part of that room and listening to that presentation. And also, it's also refreshing to be invited to neighborhood association meetings and and get to witness the the importance of neighbors and neighborhoods and how they come together to solve problems and to plan picnics and the cohesiveness of the Blue Ridge Neighborhood was was quite refreshing to witness. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmembers Sandberg, Councilmember Piedmont Smith.
No report tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Flaherty.
Report, thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember Volin.
No report, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Rosenberg.
No report, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Rallo.
Yes, just to mention that Councilmember Sandberg and I are having a constituent meeting, joint constituent meeting on Saturday, this Saturday, August twenty-first, ten AM to eleven thirty AM. And you may find the link on the council's website at bloomington.in.gov slash council. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Rallo. I'll finish up with a few remarks. I want to second Councilmember Sandberg's comments about the Blue Ridge Neighborhood Association. I won't belabor what she said, but I think it is quite refreshing to be in a meeting. In this case, a neighborhood association meeting where the conversation and the intent is quite collegial. That was very refreshing to me where people wanted to talk as well as listen. So thank you very much. But to the rest of my comments has to do with our August the fourth posted council meeting. As many of you know that that was to be a hybrid meeting, which was in person as well as on Zoom. Even prior to that, obviously, those of you who know how we do the scheduling, we do those well in advance and the schedule had to be completed in advance of the governor lifting his emergency order. But we didn't anticipate that it would be listed by the end of the month, hence the scheduling for August fourth. Well, between and betwixt, the governor's health order was extended, which was one of the factors that led to the the recess of that meeting and then the reconvening on Zoom approximately one hour later. I will say this, first of all, I talked to several of the council members about that and I really want to, those that I talked to directly, I really appreciated your support and your thoughtfulness on some of the events of the day, particularly with regard to the coronavirus and some of its variants and how it is affecting our community. That was not an easy decision to do that. But I will say that I think it was done in the best interest of community health and safety with regard to holding a public meeting that was sponsored and hosted by this council. And I think that was supported in the motion, in the meeting, the motion to recess. I think that thought and those discussions and the situation that we're facing was supported by a nine to zero vote by my colleagues and I in order to recess and then reconvene. Now, my only comments is, and I have nothing as the president of this body, I think, to apologize for. It was not an ideal situation and I'll be the first to admit that. I will also admit that I caught a lot of flak about that from certain folks in the community. I will add that I got very many positive comments. I'd say at least three times more than the flak that I received on this decision that was made by this body. And if there's anyone out there that wishes to discuss any of this with me, you can contact me and as long as it's collegial and non-argumentative, I will be happy to discuss potentially the things that led to that decision. But I just really wanted to say that it was not, it was not a easy decision at all. But we think it was the right decision with regard to public health and safety. Okay, thank you very, very much for that. Now we'll move on to, do we have any reports from the mayor or any of the city offices? I see Deputy Mayor Griffin is there and Beverly Calendar Allen Anderson. Which one of you will take it away?
We're gonna give it to Beverly.
Okay.
Beverly is gonna do an introduction.
All right, I saw you come up. I didn't know if you were involved. I'm sorry about that. Go ahead, Ms. Anderson, Calendar Anderson.
Thank you. I am Beverly Calendar Anderson, Director of the Community and Family Resources Department. And I am actually here this evening to introduce our new after-hours ambassador, Charles Culp. Charles started with us in mid-July. He is our second after-hours ambassador. As you know, our first one was Jenna Whitaker, who actually left and moved to Iowa after being with us for almost a year. So just want to introduce Charles, let him say a few words about what he's doing and so you all can get to know his face and you will be seeing him downtown if you're out and about, especially after six o'clock. So Charles, I'll turn it over to you and let you say a little bit about yourself.
Wonderful. Hello, everybody. My name is Charles Culp. I am the new after-hours ambassador. I will be working Thursday, Friday, and Saturday evenings downtown promoting safety, local businesses, and any events that are going on in the community. So if you happen to see me, feel free to talk to me and I'll put my email in the chat as well. If you'd like to email me any concerns, suggestions, ideas you have for the downtown area. So thank you so much and I'm really looking forward to this position and I'm glad to be a part of working for the city of Bloomington.
All right, thank you very much, Mr. Culp. And we look forward to working with you. I did have the pleasure of meeting Mr. Culp at function at Switchyard Park and I not only was impressed not only with his credentials, but how personable he was. And I think you do very well in meeting with our public and working towards solutions. So welcome aboard and we'll all look forward to working with you. Okay, thank you.
Thank you all.
Quite welcome. And he has put his email in chat for those who wish to partake of that. Was that all from the mayor's office and city offices? Okay, let's see. Deputy Mayor Griffin has left us. He's back and he's gonna leave us again. So I think we're at the end of that. Did you have any, you're still muted?
I'm not leaving, man. I'm still around, but I'm watching. It's fine.
Okay, I just wondered if you had any reports this evening. So thank you. We'll move on. Do we have any reports for council committees this evening? Okay, seeing none. Thank you. We'll now move to the public for any public comment. If you would, please indicate your intentions to have public comment and then we'll decide the length of time to allot. I will remind the public that you can indicate your desire to speak by using the raised hand function. I think you can get there from the participants button or and or the reactions button to indicate your desire to speak with us. You can also send a message or indicate through message in the chat function to our meeting host of your intent to, or your desire to speak if you can't get through those ways. And if you're using a mobile device phone, I believe you can indicate that by star nine, if I'm not mistaken. And I see three hands, Mr. Lucas, so I think five minutes per person can be allotted during this section for a limit, a maximum of twenty minutes. Okay, who do we have ready to go?
First up and before I unmute folks, I'll just note that there is a timer that we can display that will give you a warning sound at thirty seconds left and then we'll have another sound when your time is up. So hopefully that'll be useful in engaging how much time is left. I believe the first speaker is Sheri and they should now be able to unmute.
Yes, I'm Sheri Mitchell Booker with the Friends of Lake Monroe and I am hoping to take a few minutes of your time, first of all, to thank you for your past support of our watershed management plan. This, if you will recall, the city of Bloomington provided thirty-seven thousand five hundred dollars in matching funds to support a watershed coordinator. I'd like to report that seventy percent of that work has been completed. We are in the midst of data, what we have completed data collection and are now analyzing the data. We reached out in many different ways, including to large community forums and affairs and other events. We are working on the action plan, but what I want to mention tonight is that we are working on an implementation grant that is due September first. And this will be implementing some of the early identified projects such as cover crop implementation and twelve acres of converting farm land to forest land. We're seeking matching funds for that implementation grant. We've already gotten a commitment from Monroe County Stormwater for forty-nine thousand five hundred and sixty-six dollars match for the support of the watershed coordinator and also a commitment from Monroe County Stormwater of eighteen thousand five hundred and ninety-eight dollars to fund the gap for the watershed coordinator between the period of time when one grant ends and the other would start. So far, we have contacted City of Bloomington Administration and have had no commitment from the city in terms of matching funds or the gap funding. So you know, I'm here to wonder if there's something in the council budget process that there might be some funds available for that purpose. The city support is important for multiple reasons. One is to show the commitment to our community. Second is to show the commitment to our funders. They look very favorably on local involvement and the commitment to the many volunteers who have worked to protect Lake Monroe and improve water quality. And this is an opportunity to bring three hundred and nineteen thousand dollars in state funds to protect Lake Monroe. And the larger cash match that we can bring to the table increases our chances of getting that funding. This is also extremely important in terms of continuity. We were lucky to find a very good watershed coordinator in Maggie Sullivan. She is an excellent communicator and an excellent scientist. She has made inroads with Monroe County, Brown County, and Jackson County, the Soil and Water Conservation Districts, and many others, and is becoming an important, vital part of our community. And we want to continue to support her in that work. So I'm here just to ask if the council can do anything to help move this forward that I think the community would be very appreciative and Friends of Lake Monroe would be especially appreciative. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments, Mr. Booker Mitchell. I hope I got your name correctly. Who do we have next, Mr. Lucas?
Next up is Greg Alexander.
Hello, thanks. My name is Greg Alexander. Hey, you all remember that one time when Parks and Rec spent a million dollars of transportation funding on a recreational trail and then a decade later came to this body and said, if you give them a two million dollar bond, they transform it into transportation infrastructure by making a bike and ped connection between that trail and the rest of the city and then get this, then they just administratively decided to spend the money on something else instead. Remember that? LOL, am I right? Good times. Anyways, I'm here to talk about unsafe routes to school and about revolutionary optimism. I've been walking to Fairview Elementary for five years now. It's hard to believe my oldest is in fourth grade. Sometimes I see other parents walking to school. It's a delight to see, but it's always a little bit sad because they encounter the exact same problems I do and I see them walking in the street with their children. And the saddest thing is, I almost never see them do it twice. They read the writing on the wall. They take the hint. You know, not everyone's a head jerk, a headstrong jerk like I am. Last year, I almost got hit by a lady turning out of her parking lot on Rogers Street. She was taking her kid to school too. They live just two blocks away and they drive. I wish she paid a little more attention when driving, but I can sympathize with her decision-making. I can only imagine. Do you think she tried walking to school, wound up almost getting run over, and now she drives her kid to school? As an activist, the hardest part is not knowing what's fruitful. There are at least twenty different severe problem spots between my house and the school where we are walking in the street simply because there is literally zero sidewalk maintenance. I filed U reports for several of these, some of them many, many times. Only one time did I see any improvement at all. One time out of more than a dozen U reports. So what do I do? To get honeysuckle and poison ivy cleared off the sidewalks, do I lean on housing and neighborhoods, planning and transportation engineering? You guys, is that all wasted effort? Should I just do the work with my own two hands? Should it even be my priority? You know, the closest stop signs to the school are always a nightmare from all the other parents picking up their kids using their cars. When it comes to danger, that's actually by far the single most dangerous thing. I went one day and made a video of the drivers leaving Fairview at the stop sign at Ethan Rogers. Thirteen drivers partially blocked the crosswalk when they stopped. Five of them completely blocked the crosswalk. Eight of them didn't even stop at all. Two drivers out of that whole pickup crew correctly stopped before the crosswalk. Should I be working on that? At the four-way stop at Ethan Fairview, drivers are always blocking the crosswalk, every single moment of pickup. And there's a crossing guard right there. Should I be standing in the crosswalk screaming the ABCs of stop sign law at my fellow Fairview parents? Should I be lobbying the crossing guard? In fact, I have actually been doing those last two and the crossing guard has acknowledged there is a problem. You know what she said to me today? She said, it's hopeless. You cannot make change without hope. Without hope, an activist cannot make headway on even one facet of one problem. All effort is wasted effort if there is no hope. So I have a story. Last week, at the worst overgrown part of the sidewalk, it looked like someone had done a poor start at clearing it, like they'd spent five minutes on a one-hour job. And I wondered if maybe this was all the work we would ever see from Public Works. After a U report I filed two weeks ago was forwarded to them. But today I saw the same kind of effort at two different spots along the route. Pretty weird. And at parent pickup, I saw, oh my God. So there's this other mom and every day she rides her bike to pick up and then she walks back with her kid. And she had put a little handheld weed trimmer in the basket on her bike. Every day on the way home, she stops for five minutes somewhere and clears a little bit more. Oh my God, oh my God, oh my God, oh my God. So wow. Knowing I'm not alone, it is a powerful kind of hope. There are other people who want to walk in this town. Wow. But it's not a lasting high. Then there is the come down. Outside of campus, there are only two kinds of people who walk in this town, the desolately poor and the pathologically stubborn. And as much as I love to see this kind of attitude out of another parent, I know this problem is too big to be solved by just a couple parents who are fed up. We will burn out. We need your help. Thirteen years ago, this council unanimously approved a planning document saying that Public Works would maintain sidewalks. You know, I just read the minutes of that meeting from thirteen years ago and I came across this gem. Quote, "Buff Brown called this plan 'a shelf filler with no teeth'." Unquote. I demand to know where the hell is Public Works on this plan? Was Buff right? Is this body good for nothing more than filling shelves with dead-end reports? Thanks for your time.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Alexander. Who do we have next, Mr. Lucas?
Next up is Tina Irvine.
Hi there. Thank you. And thank you, everyone, for taking the time to listen to me today. Yeah, so my name is Tina Urban. I live in the Spicewood Two neighborhood and I believe the location of where I live is important to the story that I'd like to tell. My large issue that I'm here to address is what I would consider to be a real problem with the urban deer in town, which I know is something that people have strong opinions on in both directions. I feel that very few people are neutral on this. And so I recognize to begin that this is a tough topic to discuss, but I wanted to bring it to the council's attention because it's a, it's an issue that is now personal for me because on July nineteenth, I was sitting in my home office where I'm sitting right now at my computer when I heard in my backyard my blind ten-year-old dachshund scream and I knew something was wrong and I ran outside to find the deer that had kicked him standing there completely unmoved by his yelps of pain. I had to pick him up. He had no idea what had happened because he's blind. I had, he had about a six-inch chunk of flesh hanging off of him that I literally had to hold back on. I could see inside pulsating. It turns out that it was only muscles pulsating. And yes, I'm making this graphic on purpose, but this is what I saw because this is the situation. It's very serious. Long story short, and eight hundred dollars later, he's okay, he's gonna make it, but I thought my dog was dying as my neighbor attempted to drive me to the vet. And as a side note, I think I'm very lucky I got into the vet that day, given what we saw in the paper today. All that to say, I think the city would be well-served to bring the issue to the board again. I know I'm a Bloomington resident for most of my life, so I know that this is not a new issue. I'm familiar with the two thousand twelve report and its conclusions. And I just wanted to add that on top of what happened to me and my dog, I want to add that this was in a fenced yard. And I'm worried about what could happen to my kids. I have a five-year-old and a two-year-old who might get scared by a deer and this deer was fearless. Right? This deer did not want to move. Mike, I had another dog that came out and ran and that was the only reason the deer left. I wasn't scary enough for the deer to leave. And I will say too that I see deer in my neighborhood, multiple deer in my neighborhood every single day. They are a common occurrence and I'm also a runner. So I very often see the same deer when I start my run at the top of Serra Road in the Spicewood Two neighborhood and then I'll run over to the Sycamore Knolls neighborhood. I'll see the same. I'll see the same deer. And then I'll run over to Arden Place. I see the same deer. I run over to the YMCA. My point is, it's the swath of this inner Bloomington area and potentially other areas that have no predators. There is nothing to take them down except cars, and that's not really a good way of solving the problem. And I really would just encourage the council to think about the public health risk that this is really posing, not only in terms of animal welfare, but also in terms of potential child welfare, because I don't think I'm exaggerating when I say that this could have hurt a child. I know for a fact that a child has been hurt over in the Ridge Mead neighborhood from a deer. This, I'm not making this up. This is really happening in Bloomington. And this all, of course, I haven't even mentioned the risk that deer pose with Lyme disease and ticks. I mean, there are a lot of really good reasons to at least bring up the issue. And I'll just kind of conclude my points here by saying that it would certainly help, whether folks want to do some sort of kind of controlled coal or not, if there was at least a prohibition on feeding them, because that's a big part of what I believe prompted this particular issue. Four days before my dog was attacked, I went over and spoke with my neighbors, who are new to town, nine months or so, and they had put up a salt lick. And I went over and I explained to them how neighborly that was and how unwise that was, given that it would turn my yard into a deer highway. And she appropriately took it down, but the damage was done, so to speak. And so I would just, my plea here is just, would you please take this seriously and consider the urban deer population again? Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Ms. Irvine. Who do we have next? Mr. Lucas.
Next up is Jess. We should be able to unmute now.
Hi, my name's Jessica Griffin. I was a super quick comment. I wasn't planning on making a comment, but a previous speaker mentioned U report, and I wanted to bring to the council's attention, maybe in the hopes that someone from the city is listening and will do something about it. But it seems at this point that U report is pretty much defunct. There are reports, tickets open in there that have been open for years, months. If you're lucky enough to have your ticket assigned to someone, you get email after email of it being reassigned to someone else, and to someone else, and to someone else. And it's really frustrating because it's still pointed to as a resource for people who live here to report things. So yeah, I just hope that council could look at this, or maybe someone from the city is listening and will either use U report or find some other system to replace it. It's great in theory, but it so far has not really been serving at least me very well as a resident. Thanks.
Thank you for your comments. Do we have anyone else, Mr. Lucas?
No, I don't believe so.
Okay, before we go forward, we'll just thank the public for their comments. Now, we'll move on to appointments to boards and commissions. Do we have any nominations for appointment supports and commissions? Councilmember Rosenbarger.
Thank you. I would like to move that the council approved the mayor's appointment of Matthew Seddon to the Historic Preservation Commission.
Second.
Thank you. It's been properly moved and second. I'm sorry, so his name was Matthew Seddon? Yes, thank you. To the Historic Preservation Commission. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. President?
I'm so sorry, yes, ma'am.
Just a question, is that a nomination to a specific seat, or is the Historic Preservation Commission handled differently?
Go ahead, Councilmember Rosenbarger.
Thanks. So this one is a little different than the others. This is, this is a mayoral appointment, but with the Historic Preservation Commission, we, the council, approves the mayor's appointment. It's kind of like a double, double-duty situation here. So the council, so I don't know, I think it is a specific seat for the mayor, but we are not the ones assigning that, so he has assigned it. And we're just voting on it. And the difference between our Historic Preservation Commission appointees and his, or that his vote and ours do not, we had appointed him originally, and the mayor wants to transition him into a voting role.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Scambler. Before we go with the roll call, I will check with our parliamentarian, Councilmember Clarity, and Mr. Lucas. Can we proceed without having a specific seat? I'll include clerk voting with that as well. Can we proceed without having a specific seat for this appointment? Okay, seeing none, okay.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, I would defer to the clerk. I think it's usually for their record-keeping that we try to specify.
Usually you try and keep it for specific, just for purposes of tracking, and I believe it's seat M5, which is indicating mayoral seat five, if that would help you.
Okay, just for tracking purposes, in order to proceed. So having clarified that, will the clerk please call the roll?
Yes, Councilmember Rosenbarger?
Yes.
Scambler?
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
Clarity?
Yes.
Pete Monsmith?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Sandberg?
Yes.
Sandberg?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
And Volin?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. That nomination is approved, 9-0. Do we have any other nominations for appointment supports and commissions this evening? Okay, seeing none, thank you all very much. We'll now move on with the agenda. I do believe we have legislation for second readings and resolutions. Councilmember Clarity?
President, I moved appropriation ordinance 21-01 be introduced and read by the clerk, but headline synopsis only.
Thank you. It's been properly moved and seconded. Will the clerk please call the roll? I'm sorry, I'm sorry, let me start off. It's been appropriately moved and seconded for appropriation ordinance 21-01. Now, will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Scambler?
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
Clarity?
Yes.
Pete Monsmith?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Sandberg?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Volin?
Yes.
And Rosenbarger?
Yes.
Thank you. That has passed. I think I was kind of waiting for Councilmember Clarity.
I believe we need the clerk to read still.
Yeah, I thought there was something else coming first. Sorry, been a couple weeks. Will the clerk please read? Thank you.
Sure. Appropriation ordinance 2101 to appropriate from the ARP Coronavirus Local Fiscal Recovery Fund, IFA Coronavirus Relief Fund, General Fund, and Parks and Recreation General Fund expenditures for purposes that fulfill the intent of the American Rescue Plan Act in aid of the City of Bloomington's recovery from the effects of the COVID-19 emergency. The synopsis is as follows. This ordinance appropriates funds from the ARP Coronavirus Local Fiscal Recovery Fund for the purposes set forth in the ARPA Community Investment Plan and from the IFA Coronavirus Relief Fund, General Fund, and Parks and Recreation General Fund for additional expenditures the city will make to aid the community's recovery from the COVID-19 pandemic.
Councilmember Clarity?
Moved the appropriation ordinance 21-01 be adopted?
Second.
Thank you. It's been properly moved and seconded, and I see that we have Corporation Council, Ms. Philippa Guthrie here. Will you please proceed?
Yes, thank you. Philippa Guthrie, Corporation Council for the city. I'll give you a little synopsis of how we got here tonight, since it's been a couple of weeks. So this is, again, the ordinance, appropriations ordinance for 2021 expenditure of funds from the ARPA distribution that we have, will be getting. I believe we, I believe we still only have half of it. If I'm wrong on that, Jeff Underwood can correct me, but, and that's about 11 million. So we are proposing expenditures in this app ord. On June 16th, the council approved the ARP fund, which was required by the State Board of Accounts for accounting separately for these funds. It's similar to what we did with the CARES Act, that also required a separate fund. And that was approved June 16th. July 21st, you approved by resolution the ARP expenditure plan, and that was original resolution 2125. And you may recall that the plan is currently the list of proposed 2021 expenditures that you will now be, I hope, agreeing to appropriate. So that what the plan reflects is what the ordinance has adopted as appropriation, so that they are consistent. So in the future, when you approve other appropriations of the ARPA funds, we will update the plan. The 2021 expenditures are detailed in appropriations ordinance, and they are, again, what's in the plan, and they are grants for the Housing Authority to create affordable housing options, a grant to the United Way for addressing homelessness and housing insecurity, efforts to increase landlord participation in federal Section 8 and similar programs, accelerating job training and employment of underemployed categories of workers, grants to local arts and cultural groups to foster recovery, deferred maintenance at the Waldron to reactivate it as a community arts venue and economic engine, professional services to evaluate the potential for a new downtown performing arts facility, identification and inventory of all lead-based service lines in the CBU system and prepare for a replacement program, and digital equity investments advancing the goals of the Digital Equity Strategic Plan. So the first proposal is for appropriation for those purposes from the ARP Coronavirus Local Fiscal Recovery Fund. That is quite a mouthful, but that's the required title. The second part of the ordinance is transfers from the IFA Coronavirus Relief Fund. So this is the CARES Act fund. And these are to transfer $340,000 to ITS, Community and Family Resources and Facilities Maintenance in the General Fund, and then $260,000 to the Parks and Recreation General Fund. And the third part of the appropriations ordinance is actually appropriating those funds that were transferred from the IFA Coronavirus Fund. This, it's a, it's a little bit of a convoluted process, but that's what we are required to do. So that is the appropriations ordinance, and if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Thank you very much, Ms. Bethry, for your presentation. Do we have, are there any questions from councilmembers? I see none, and we'll move on to the public.
Councilmember Pete Monsmith?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Councilmember Pete Monsmith.
Yes, thank you. I had a question about the funding for the Bloomington Housing Authority to explore possible land trust. And I just wanted to, I see Ms. Scobie is on the call, the director of BHA, and I wonder if she could just speak briefly about the Summit Hill nonprofits' capacity for pursuing such projects, since they largely do just public housing, kind of a limited scope currently. So if she could just speak to this expanded role for Summit Hill, I would appreciate it.
I am Amber Scobie, the executive director of the Bloomington Housing Authority. To address the question, a quick reminder, Summit Hill Community Development Corporation is the 501(c)(3) development arm of the Bloomington Housing Authority. So its main mission is to expand affordable housing opportunities through renovation work, like we're doing with the RAD conversions, and also to build new housing. So we have been building the capacity of both the BHA staff and Summit Hill, first through those RAD conversions, so completing that work, going through the process in terms of applying for low-income housing tax credits, getting financing in order to make those renovations, also managing the units, so all of the compliance that comes with making sure and verifying that those who are living in the units meet those appropriate qualifications for the program. So we're also participating in the Indiana Supportive Housing Institute, a way to build capacity to own and manage and develop, of course, permanent supportive housing. So we are slowly building that capacity. We also have a development partner, Bryn Shore, that helps bring some expertise to the team as well. So, you know, I think overall, the housing authority is positioning itself not to be, you know, just administrative funds through the voucher and public housing, but to be a real estate company with a deep social mission to build and manage more affordable housing. So I know you hear a lot about our RAD conversions, but we are working to build more success in the community through that development. Some of the community land trust, we do a lot of those types of things already in terms of holding ground leases for our properties and then getting the financing to do the development work or the renovation work, actually, for RAD. So hopefully that answers the question. It's, it's really, the answer is, we're kind of building ourselves up and looking for the right project after we, we complete RAD. And we know there are some opportunities with, with the core building being selected as the preferred development developer, hopefully for the, the core building, and also, you know, other opportunities that might come our way, both through doing development work and also doing all of the behind-the-scenes, sort of establishing the community land trust to see if Summit Hill could be a good vehicle for that.
Thank you. So do I understand from what you just said that the Summit Hill Community Development Authority is, has had a successful proposal for the redevelopment of the core building?
We did respond to the RFP for that, and we haven't been kind of officially named because there's, you know, still some work to be done with that property. But we were the preferred developer, just waiting on the RDC, I believe, and some other logistics around the IU hospital site. But Summit Hill, BHA, along with Bryn Shore Development, our development partner, and also Centerstone, we put a proposal together that hopefully will get awarded ultimately.
Great, I did not know that. President Simmons, may I ask one other follow-up question?
Yes, Councilmember Pete Monsmith.
So the $250,000 for BHA to work on affordable housing options, will that mostly be to pay staff or consultants, or what's the, what do you envision the funds to be used for?
So ideally, it would help fund a staff position just temporarily until Summit Hill can earn some development fees and also create some revenue from land trust, so a little bit of gap funding in there for a staff position, and then also a lot of consulting and legal fees. So how we set our organization up to be a community land trust, just some tax advice, really. create some revenue from land trust. So a little bit of gap funding in there for a staff position. And then also a lot of consulting and legal fees. So how we set our organization up to be a community land trust, just some tax advice really, like not to get too technical, but just capitalizing Summit Hill has some implications and risks potentially. So understanding those, yeah, just making sure that we have a framework to launch off of. That really requires some experts and some, some attorneys, some legal advice.
All right. Thank you for those additional details.
Thank you. And my apologies, Councilmember Pete Mon Smith. I didn't see your hand the first time. Sorry. Okay. Do we have any further comments or questions, or questions from council? Mr. Lucas.
I, I certainly don't want to cut off any questions. I will just note that there was a draft amendment prepared and included in your packet to make two very minor corrections. And before going to public comment, I just wanted to mention that in case the council wanted to consider that first.
Okay. Thank you very much. Councilmember Flaherty.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Lucas and Mr. President. I remember seeing that and that the amendment was in need of a sponsor. I'd be happy to do that. So with that noted, I move amendment one to appropriation ordinance 21-01.
Second.
Thank you.
So.
Yeah, go ahead. Go ahead, Councilmember Flaherty.
I was just charging ahead. I think, I think I cut you off. So my apologies.
Oh, you're fine. Please proceed.
So yes, as was just referenced, this is in the packet, I believe, page 34 of the PDF in my version. There are two minor corrections. One inserts the text July 21st prior to what was formerly a blank comma 2021 in the eighth whereas clause of the ordinance. And then the second correction revises how the, what, what the digital equity investments may, may include. Previously it said grants. That's replaced with the word investments to not limit the type of investment only or exclusively to grants. So those are the two corrections. If city staff who developed the amendment would like to speak further to those, I would, I would certainly welcome that as well.
I think you covered it. Nothing further to add.
Okay, thank you. And this is amendment one to app or 21-01. Okay, it's been properly moved the second. Do we have any questions or comments from council? Okay, seeing none. Do we have any comments from the public on amendment one for appropriation ordinance 21-01? Okay, seeing none. We'll go back to council for any final comments on amendment one. Seeing that, will the clerk please call the roll on amendment one for appropriation ordinance 21-01?
Yes, Councilmember Sims.
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Pete Mon Smith?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Sandberg?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Wolin?
Yes.
Rosenbarger?
Yes.
And Scambalory?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. And that amendment passes in high C roll. We will now go to public comment on appropriation ordinance 21-01 as amended. Okay, seeing none, we'll return to council for any final comments. And seeing none, are we ready for the question? Will the clerk please call the roll appropriation ordinance 21-01 as amended?
Yes, Councilmember Flaherty?
Yes.
Pete Mon Smith?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Sandberg?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Wolin?
Yes.
Rosenbarger?
Yes.
Scambalory?
Yes.
And Sims?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. And that passes nine zero. Thank you very much. We do have legislation for first readings. Councilmember Flaherty.
Mr. President, I move that ordinance 21-33 be introduced and read by the clerk by title and synopsis only.
Thank you. It's been properly moved the second. Will the clerk please read?
Did you want me to call the roll? Is that?
I'm sorry. Please call the roll. Thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Pete Mon Smith?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Sandberg?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Wolin?
Yes.
Rosenbarger?
Yes.
Scambalory?
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
And Flaherty?
Yes.
All right. Sounds good.
Okay, thank you. That passes nine zero. Thank you, Kirk Bowden, for catching me there. A little skittish this evening, it seems. Will the clerk please read?
Yes. Ordinance 2133, final approval to issue economic development revenue notes and lend the proceeds for the renovation of affordable housing regarding Crestmont Community, 1002 North Summit Street, Bloomington, Indiana, Bloomington Rad 2 LP petitioner. The synopsis is as follows. This ordinance authorizes the city of Bloomington to issue economic development revenue notes pursuant to Indiana Code, Chapter 36, 7, 11.9 and 36, 712, in an amount not to exceed an aggregate principal amount of $30 million. The city would lend the proceeds from the economic development revenue notes to Bloomington Rad 2 LP and Indiana Limited Partnership and its affiliated partners or limited liability company for the acquisition, rehabilitation and renovation of the affordable housing development known as the Crestmont Community at 107 Summit Street in Bloomington, in Bloomington. Bloomington Rad 2 LP and its partners would fully indemnify the city and take full responsibility for payment of the notes. The city would not bear liability, ongoing obligation or costs related to the notes, and the city would not, and the city would act only as a conduit, allowing the borrower to access capital at a tax exempt rate and receive equity for the project in the form of tax credits. The renovations to the community would focus on addressing code requirements, handicapped accessibility, modernizing the units and energy efficiency.
Thank you very much. I will remind our colleagues and the our colleagues that under local code, the president may refer legislation to the appropriate committee when the legislation is introduced for first reading, but such a referral may be changed by a motion approved by a majority of the council. Now, I am referring for ordinance 21-33 to the committee of the whole to meet immediately following the conclusion of tonight's regular session. Thank you. Councilmember Flaherty.
I was going to move on with the introducing our motion on the next ordinance if we're ready for that.
Yes, we are.
I move that ordinance 21-32 be introduced and read by the clerk by title and synopsis only.
Second.
Thank you. It's been properly moved the second. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Yes, Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Sandberg?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Wolin?
Yes.
Rosenbarger?
Yes.
Scambalory?
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
And Pete Mon Smith? I'm sorry, I didn't hear you, Councilmember Pete Mon Smith.
All right, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. That passes nine zero. Will the clerk please read?
Yes, ordinance 2132, to amend Title 8 of the Bloomington Municipal Code entitled Historic Preservation and Protection to establish a historic district regarding the Thomas Smith House Historic District. The synopsis is as follows. This ordinance amends Chapter 8.20 of the Bloomington Municipal Code entitled List of Designated Historic and Conservation Districts in order to designate the Thomas Smith House parcel number 530803400 088.001-009, located at 1326 South Pickwick Place, City of Bloomington, Monroe County, Indiana, as a historic district. Built in 1828, the Thomas Smith House is one of the earliest examples of the I-house form in Bloomington. The home is one of, only one of a handful of covenantary brick farmhouse houses from the early settlement period of Bloomington that still stand, and it maintains a high level of historic integrity due to the unaltered state of the original portion of the house. The house is associated with Thomas Smith, a member of the early Covenantary Church in Bloomington, a philanthropist and a purported conductor on the Underground Railroad.
Thank you. I am reforming, referring ordinance 21-32 to the committee of the whole to meet immediately following the conclusion of tonight's regular session. Thank you, Councilmember Flaherty.
Yes, I'd like to move that ordinance 21-31 be introduced and read by the clerk by title and synopsis only.
Second.
Thank you. It's been properly moved the second. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Yes, Councilmember Sandberg?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Wolin?
Yes.
Rosenbarger?
Yeah.
Scambalory?
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Pete Mon Smith?
Yes.
And Smith?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. That was approved nine zero. I am referring ordinance 21-31 to I am so sorry. Go ahead. Yes.
I believe we need the clerk to, to read before we.
We sure do. I told you earlier, I'm a little skittish for some reason. So thank you. Will the clerk please read?
I'll make it quick. Or 2131. Ordinance 2131, to amend the city of Bloomington zoning maps by amending the district ordinance and preliminary plan of the Curry PUD regarding 105 South Pete Ellis Drive, Curry Urban Properties Petitioner. The synopsis is as follows. Ordinance 2131 amends the district ordinance and preliminary plan for the Curry PUD to allow for three bedroom units and some design changes to the building, among other changes, while still allowing the construction of one mixed use building.
Thank you very much. Yeah, I'm flipping between multiple documents. So again, thank you all for your patience. I am referring ordinance 21-31 to the committee of the whole immediately following the conclusion of tonight's regular session. Councilmember Pete Mon Smith.
For the record, I would just like to respectfully state my disagreement with with President Sims' decision to refer this to the committee of the whole instead of the Land Use Committee, which considered the initial PUD and is more appropriate committee. I'm not going to make a motion to change it now because we have noticed the committee of the whole meeting, we have not noticed a land use committee meeting for today. So I won't derail the schedule, but I just wanted to make a note of that. Thank you.
Thank you for making note of that, Councilmember Pete Mon Smith. Okay. We now move to additional public comment. We have anyone from the public who wish to speak on matters of the community concern not listed on the agenda at one of the two public common opportunities. Citizens may speak one at one of these periods, but not both. Speakers are allowed five minutes. The time allotment may be reduced by the presiding officer if numerous people wish to speak. With the public, if anyone wishes a comment, please indicate their desire to speak by either using the raised hand function through the participants bar or and or the reactions button on Zoom. You may send a notice to our meeting host through chat indicating your desire to speak. If you're on a mobile device, I do believe star nine will work to indicate your desire to speak as well. Mr. Lucas.
I do not see any takers at the moment.
Okay, thank you very much. We'll now move on to matters of council schedule.
Yes, thank you. Just a couple of reminders. The council has a scheduled work session this Friday at 12 noon to hear about legislation that will be coming forward in the next legislative cycle starting on September 1st. I believe those items include a resolution sponsored by a few council members on nuclear proliferation and an ordinance that Councilmember Wolin has authored affecting time limits for council meetings. So unless I hear otherwise tonight, we will plan on holding that work session this upcoming Friday at, at 12 noon.
Thank you very much. Can council members please indicate a raising hand, something your intent to attend on Friday work session? Okay, I see a majority. So we will hold that Friday at noon.
Thank you.
You're quite welcome. Have any, any other matters on council schedule?
Just a reminder that next week starts budget week and departmental budget hearings on Monday, August 23rd at six o'clock, which is different than normal 6:30 start time. So six o'clock. Each of the four nights next week will, will begin at six o'clock. Departments will be presenting their, their budgets to you all and budget books should be available this Friday ahead of next week. So keep an eye out for that and just wanted to remind folks that that's coming up next week. And I believe that's it.
Hey, thank you very much. I will remind folks that the committee of the whole will be chaired by Councilmember Ron Smith. And I will entertain a motion to adjourn this regular session. And also a reminder that the committee of the whole will be following immediately after the adjournment of this regular session. Councilmember Flaherty.
And move we adjourn.
Thank you. It's been properly moved the second. We are hereby adjourned. We will recommit here shortly as committee of the whole. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Do we need, do we need a, a minute or two break for people to stand up and stretch? Or shall we just go ahead?
I'd say you're, I'd say you're the chair.
Anybody have any?
My check with the parliamentarian.
Parliamentarian?
In my non-parliamentarian capacity, I would, I would appreciate like two minutes, but um, that's just my opinion. So up to you.
Okay, let's take, let's take two minutes. We get up and stretch and we'll reconvene and it looks like 7:40. Okay?
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Of course. Right, this is a, I'll call to order committee of the whole summation of the agenda is that we have three ordinances we're going to go through and ask for due pass recommendations from members. All members are present, except I believe Isabel, Councilmember Pete Mon Smith is not at this point. All right, so we have ordinance 2133, which is the economic development revenue notes for the Crestmont Community in the Rad petition. So I believe the city, there are city members here that are here to present. in the RAD petition. So I believe the city, there are city members here that are here to present. Mister, Mister Allen, Mister Crowley, Miss Scobie, whoever wants to go ahead, I would say, let's do it.
I can give just a brief introduction and then turn it over to Miss Scobie and Chris Cass. You all considered this earlier in the year
You're breaking, you're breaking up, Mr. Allen.
That effectively gave some tacit support. You all considered the inducement resolution, like gave some tacit support earlier in the year to the issuance of these bonds. It notes this is for the renovation of the Crestmont community as part of the BHA. This authorization, as as noted earlier in the first reading of it, is for an amount not to exceed a principal amount, not to exceed thirty million dollars, and it does not incur liability onto the city as per the Economic Development Bond Statute. These are referred to as notes here because we believe that this is going to be a private placement with a bank. There is no the notes or the bonds. It's just that difference in the placement of purchasing in the language that they prefer. With that said, in terms of the details of the project, it's an exciting project. I'll turn over to Amber Scobie, who undoubtedly an excellent job informing you. Thank you.
So I can kick it off. Thanks, Larry. This is Chris Cashman speaking. I'm an attorney with Ice Miller, who's serving as bond counsel on this transaction. Joining me tonight, as was previously mentioned, is Amber Scobie of the Bloomington Housing Authority, and also Tyler Kloschnick, who's a partner in Ice Miller. If if the technology permits, we'll try to maybe share a screen. Let's see. For a presentation that might be helpful for folks to to follow along.
Sure, go ahead.
But just first off, thanks to this body and city staff for making the time for us this evening and including us on your agenda. As Larry mentioned, this project, Crestmont Community Project, was before the city late last year or early this year for its inducement phase approvals, and now we're back before you for for some final approvals. So the EDC met last week and approved the project, and part of that approval was to make a recommendation to move this ordinance to to your body and into the full council for not to exceed conduit bond issuance of thirty million dollars, so I will probably kick it over to Amber to talk a little bit about the project, the scope of renovations, and some of the topics that are that are kind of under her wheelhouse, and then I'll finish up with the structure of the bonds and the credits and kind of the approval process. But but just for your context, this, from the city's perspective, the approval process is very similar to what you experienced with Reverend Butler and Walnut Woods project, so I'll move it over to the mic over to Amber, and I can now progress the slides for you, Amber, as necessary.
Thank you, Mr. Cash.
Thanks, Chris. This is Amber Scobie. Can everyone hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, great. Amber Scobie, Executive Director of the Bloomington Housing Authority. So just to give you an overview of Crestmont, many of you probably know where it is, but it's on the northwest side of Bloomington. It's south of Fifteenth Street, just north of Twelfth Street, east of Lindbergh and west of Monroe Street. It was originally built in nineteen sixty five, and it was our first public housing community in Bloomington. It's currently a hundred and ninety-six units, and we will be increasing that through the renovation work to two hundred and four units that will serve both individuals and families, so one to five bedroom units. It's located at one oh oh two Summit Street. Some nearby amenities and supportive services for our residents include things like the Ferguson Crestmont Boys and Girls Club, Community Kitchen Express, South Central Community Action Program, and their Head Start Program. Lots of things in that neighborhood. It's currently managed and owned by the Housing Authority, but through the conversion that we're planning, a hundred percent of the units will remain affordable and receive a subsidy still from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, or HUD, through what we call a Housing Assistance Payment Contract, or it's a Section Eight funding long-term for up to forty years, and that's mandatory to receive that stream of funding. Just so you know, right now, public housing gets funding under Section Nine, and we're switching this to a Section Eight funding stream. It's much more predictable and much more stable, and we feel like that is in the best interest in the community for long-term viability. And even after the renovation work, the Housing Authority will continue to do the property management for the residents. It will look and feel much the same in terms of same maintenance staff, same property management. And here's just a few pictures of the Crestmont community. Okay, so a little bit more detail about the proposed project. So we will do extensive renovation work. You know, we're asking for thirty million in bonds, and the money that we'll put towards the unit renovations will be just a little bit shy of that amount, so in the high twenty millions. The renovation work will focus on some code requirements and upgrade structural repair, unit modernization, and even energy efficiency. Some of the units have not been extensively renovated since they were built in the nineteen sixties. We've done work throughout the years in different phases of repairs, thanks to some CDBG money from the city. We did some Federal Home Loan Bank Affordable Housing Program, some energy efficiency upgrades, but never had enough to do everything, but that's what we'll be doing. We are doing some reconfiguration to accommodate wheelchair accessibility, also accommodations for those that might be hearing or visually impaired. Also important things like new roofs, site lighting upgrades to the site, interior improvements, new flooring. We have this great laminate vinyl tile product that we've been using on previous renovations that will continue throughout. New kitchen cabinets, countertops, adding things like dishwashers, providing washers and dryers, improving the energy efficiency of furnaces, air conditioning units, windows, lots of of things going on, pretty much a facelift or complete redo of all the units. We're also reconfiguring some units. We have a super high demand for one bedrooms. The waitlist is easily over a hundred people long, and so we want to convert some three-bedroom townhomes to two one-story units, so there will be one, or sorry, not one story, but one bedroom. So there will be a unit on the first floor and then a unit on the second floor, and that is hopefully meeting a little bit more of the high demand. I get a lot of questions about resident relocation. We're still working on that phasing schedule, but we will be relocating current Crestmont residents, and they will be out of the units for closer to the ninety-day mark, even up to a hundred days. We give at least thirty-day notice to that date that they will move. We have moving service that's paid for that completes the move. We pay for things like if there is cable or internet hookup fees, and we relocate them to a unit within Crestmont or a comparable unit. And we are starting those relocation meetings in a couple weeks, so we'll meet, we'll have a few community meetings to talk that over and make sure everyone understands the plan. And we're not creating any new jobs, but we will be retaining around ten. Okay, so a little bit of background to the Rental Assistance Demonstration Program. It came about in twenty twelve. It is approved by Congress and really meant to address the billions and billions of dollars in underfunding and capital backlog of public housing stock throughout the country. It allows housing agencies to leverage both public and private debt to make investments in major renovations and upgrades. It's really one of the only funding tools that we have to make major improvements and to preserve the deep affordability that public housing provides. So I mentioned earlier, we're moving to the Section Eight platform, a long-term contract, so at least forty years, and it ensures that those units remain permanently affordable. Residents continue to pay thirty percent of their adjusted monthly income, and we are also going to be paying for the utility bills, so that, we feel, makes it much easier on the residents. They have one rent payment to worry about, promotes great housing stability. They also maintain some of the basic rights that they possess as a public housing tenant. Most importantly, the right to organize through Resident Council grievance procedures, and they are not re-screened upon conversion. RAD maintains the public stewardship of that property, again, has lots of rules and regulations like public housing, but doesn't allow us to access private financing. And it's cost neutral. It doesn't necessarily increase the federal budget, but allows that flexibility to be given to housing authorities in order to access all this capital that we need to make the renovations. So I will turn it over to bond counsel, just to give a little bit more detail about how this issuance will work.
Thank you, Amber. So this slide is meant to visually represent really the conduit nature of this deal, and then also the the different parties that participate in this deal, including the city, the bond structure and the credit structure. So as we mentioned a few times earlier in this presentation, this project was before the city late last year. That inducement portion of the approvals allowed for Amber and her team to make an application to the IHCDA, the Indiana Housing and Community Development Authority for bond volume, and also tax credits, and those were awarded to the projects in June of this year. So as you can see on this slide, the city acts as a conduit issuer, issuing its its conduit, its economic development revenue note. The bond purchaser then provides, purchases the note, provides the funds that will be lent back to the project. Also, in kind of a simultaneous timeframe, the tax credits through tax credit syndication will be sold to an equity investor, which is another way for the project to be capitalized, reducing kind of the debt the project needs to carry to get done is by finding this equity investor through the tax credit syndication process. We'll jump to the next slide, which goes over kind of four big bucket steps that the that most of these projects must check off. We mentioned earlier the inducement process, which the city's already gone through. Amber and her team are are working on steps two and three right now by building up a working group and conducting their and performing their due diligence related to the project. And then we also mentioned that IHCDA has awarded bond volume and tax credit to the project, so we're at step four from the city's perspective regarding approvals of the project, its final approvals. As I mentioned, the EDC met last week, considered the project, and part of its adoption of its resolution was to recommend this ordinance that's before this committee this evening. This final approval will permit the bonds to be issued, and the EDC, through its approval, will also deliver a project report as well to local planning folks. And then kind of a few high lever, high-level concepts related to the city acting as a conduit issuer. The bonds are being issued as as Clerk Bolden and Larry mentioned pursuant to Indiana Code thirty six, seven, eleven point nine, and twelve. We've gone through the EDC process and a few really crucial characteristics of these these notes. We use the term for state law purposes for thirty six, seven, twelve purposes interchangeably, bonds and notes. So these notes will be payable, will not be payable from the taxes or be a general obligation of the city. The notes are solely payable from the revenues of the project. And then when the city issues these notes as or should the city issue these notes as a conduit issuer, it has no impact on the the city's constitutional debt limit or bank qualified limit. So the city truly is acting as a conduit issuer, allowing the borrower to to access capital in the tax-exempt markets, which lowers the costs of the project or inversely allows for more dollars to be pumped into the project with lower interest rate costs related to the debt used to finance a portion of the project. So there's no ongoing obligation or administration requirement by the city. The borrower and solely the borrower is responsible for all tax compliance and all payments of principal and interest on on the notes and in the borrower indemnifies the city in all respects. So that was a bit of a quick presentation, again, probably similar to what you saw for Amber's RAD one project and also perhaps what you saw during the inducement phase, but we're happy to field any questions that this body may have at the moment, and we would appreciate your consideration of of moving the ordinance forward to the to the full council.
Thank you, Mr. Cashman, Miss Scobie, and Mr. Allen. Councilmembers, you have some questions about the project that you would like to ask Councilmember Scamblerie.
I think Councilmember Rala might have been first, so, oh, oh, pardon me.
Well, thank you. Yeah, my question is, Ms. Scobie, you mentioned that utility bills are included in rent. And is that a flat rate then for all apartments?
The cost of the utilities?
Yeah.
No, it wouldn't be a flat rate. We, the project pays the utility costs, and that's paid out of income generated from the rent collection. Again, tenants just pay thirty percent of their adjusted monthly income. And then we also receive the Section Eight subsidy, so we're acting as the landlord in this case, receiving a Section Eight payment. And out of that income, you know, we pay for the operations of which the utilities is a part of that. But it varies. The the units are individually metered. Obviously, different household sizes use different utility levels, so not flat, but.
I see. So the, so each unit is calculated, and then it's included in the rent? Is that correct?
No, it is. It's, it's just paid for. It's, it's not included in the rent. The rent is just based on the tenant income, and that's what they pay, and we have to make up the rest of the expense level through through what we collect. But that's usually a, it's a pretty good amount, but the the financing for this project works well, that we can afford to pay the utilities as the owner and not pass it on to the tenant as their responsibility. But we are, that's why we're implementing some energy savings approaches through HVAC systems and you know, trying to save where we can. But we did resident meetings before we decided to do the RAD conversion, and the utility issue was a hot topic, and many residents voiced that they wanted to keep those as paid by the owner of the property.
Okay, can I approach this from a different angle, and that is so when one uses utilities, whatever it is, electricity or water or so forth, there's an incentive to to save. There's a, there's a, there's a cost signal or price signal that you get a bill and and you you determine, you know, how efficient you want to be. And this doesn't, this is not that signal is missing, it seems to me. Is that correct? Is that correct? I mean, the 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 individual apartment dweller is not. Doesn't see the the extra cost of the utility, is that right?
Yes, that's a decision that we made that the financial stability and having this least amount of barriers as possible to maintain housing. In that we take away that stress of keeping up with utilities. That we kept that over, you know, trying to control behavior and usage of of utilities. So I understand what you're saying. We do individually meter the units, so we could track to see what might be high usage units and do tenant education with that. But yeah, there's very little behavior control with this approach. But again, we feel like keeping it as simple as we can for the residents is most important.
I understand that. My trepidation is that if you don't under if if you if you don't get a signal about the usage. Some people may be careful, other people may not be. And overall, the costs go up, which means that everybody's paying more. So. That is, and you know, I'm I'm heartened to hear that you have some sort of you you would make some educational effort. But that seems to be a flaw in that model, seems to me. But. I'm open to more discussion about it later. So that's that's all I'll say on the topic, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rallo, Ms. Scambalory.
Yes, thank you. Thank you all, thank you both, well, all three of you for the presentation. Ms. Scobie, I just wanted to go back and and double check my numbers because they were really striking. You mentioned that the waiting list for a for one bedrooms is a hundred people long.
At least, yeah, it might be even longer than that. But it's consistently, you know, averages about a hundred individuals and and families, yes.
And what might be the what are the wait lists, just ballpark for two bedrooms and three bedrooms?
I would say a two bedroom is under twenty, a three bedroom around ten. And the four and fives are under ten, but like a ten year wait. So I looked, I think on the one bedrooms, we have some folks that have been waiting as long as four or five years on that waitlist.
Wow. And do you? And I get the sense from how you presented it that it's not, you don't think of it as an anomaly. You think we're it's a legitimate trend this way. Are we going to see more demand for the one bedrooms? And might we see, I'm trying to think ahead to future conversion projects that you might undertake and to just think through that.
Right, yeah, I I definitely think it's a national trend. I mean, baby boomers aging, a lot of folks that live in the one bedrooms are elderly or near elderly, I should say. And disabled, so yeah, I don't think Blomington is an exception. But I I do think there's a high demand because of some of those demographics. And, you know, often a lot of folks that, yeah, might be single individuals on a fixed income. That's that's a great option for them.
Thank you very much for fleshing that out for me, I appreciate.
Thank you. Other questions from council members? Mr. Flaherty?
Sure. Appreciate, well, thanks, thanks all, everybody for the presentations. And I appreciate customer Rallo's comments about about signals for efficiency and kind of some of the disadvantages of of including utilities automatically and folks not receiving that signal. And I I would just say that there's some other ways to to send that. So a good research on, you know, sending a smiley face, frowny face or neutral about your usage and other things like that. There could be possibly like rebates for the, you know, ten units or something that that use the least. I wonder if, and sorry, I'll kind of get to a question here that's related to efficiency and energy usage. But kind of continuing to unpack that sort of non-traditional utility payment structure. Normally, there's what's called a split incentive with with something like energy efficiency improvements or renewable energy. Where if there's a tenant paying the utility bills, a landlord doesn't have any incentive to to invest in energy efficiency, for instance. So we have the opposite of that here, and and that would actually apply to the use of renewable energy as well. And I'm I'm wondering about, probably not with this project, but but if it's been discussed by the housing authority and and possibly for future projects. Since we know that solar panels, for instance, pay for themselves fair relatively, you know, quickly, certainly much, much more quickly. Than the their lifecycle. It seems like that would be in the financial interest of the housing authority to to implement. To include to to install solar panels where possible, since you are paying those utility bills, at least in this case. And in particular, the the mention of new roofs got me thinking about that too. So could could you weigh in about that at all if that's been discussed? Or would be a possibility if there's limitations with funding sources that that would not be an option?
Yes, it's certainly been discussed. But the last renovation project that we've been working on, we did install solar panels on one building that houses four units. And Reverend Butler, thanks to grants, so late last year, earlier this year from the city. And it was about a fifty thousand dollar grant that allowed us to install those panels. It that they were just sort of hooked up, if you will, a month ago. So that seems to be going well so far. We did put some money or sorry, put a line item in contingency fund. So at the end of the renovation work, if there's some money that's unspent, we would spend it on solar panels. But unfortunately, we ran into a lot of other issues. And we'll do the same with Crestmont, put it into contingency as a possible project. Because obviously, savings on the utilities means that the project pays less. And we can spend that money on other things like resident services and, you know, all of those great things to help our tenants. So yes, it's discussed, it really is a limitation in the project budget. There's some pretty deep issues in Crestmont that are very expensive and trying to take care of those basic infrastructure. And yes, would love to see solar panels and it's it's on the wish list, yes.
Um, and sorry, just following on that same point, are there are there total dollar amount upper limits on on the type of financing you can get for various projects like this? Just because, again, we have essentially guaranteed savings. If if you're going to be, you know, renting and paying for utilities for a long term, you know, fifteen years plus. And you know that it's it's the and any bonds or notes secured for installing solar panels would would pay for themselves in time. And and you know, if that can be guaranteed and demonstrated upfront, I would think that it would be relatively easy to secure a greater amount of financing for that. But maybe that's wrong, I don't know.
Yeah, I mean, we can finance based on our operating income, so kind of what we're generating, rent and subsidy. And then obviously, we get some breaks on interest rates and, you know, these bonds. And so we have to, you know, borrow and finance what we can afford and pay off based on our operations. Yeah, I would love to hear more about some other affordable loan programs or grants that might be available. But obviously, we can only leverage so much.
Yeah, of course, that makes sense, thank you for your answer.
Thank you, Mr. Flaherty. Anyone else have a question? Mr. Sims?
Thank you, thank you for the report, Ms. Scobie and Mr. Allen. I guess when with regard to utilities. And if it's all in the rent, then I'm assuming everything is master metered. So there's no individual meters, is that correct?
There are individual meters, yes, yes. And that's because the housing authority at one time owned all of the gas lines. And we recently turned over ownership of those to veteran. And part of that agreement was to have them individually metered. But that was done because housing authority should not be responsible for natural gas lines. It was too much of a liability, yeah.
I don't, I agree with you on that. But what I'm getting to is, I think you mentioned something about educational plan for efficiency. And can you talk a little bit more about that? I mean, I'm not so sure I quite understood that. And what I was getting at with the master meters. Many of us here get individual bills and from utilities. And they oftentimes include graphs comparing your usage to the average use or the efficient use. So I'm wondering from an educational standpoint, how are we able? I guess for lack of a better term, educate folks on efficient use. And at the same time, understanding that we don't want to put undue burden on, you know, lower income populations at all in this case. So can you talk about that just a bit?
Yeah. Each of the units are individually metered, so we do get an envelope for each unit. So, you know, every month we get six hundred envelopes, about three hundred from the gas company. And three hundred from the electric company. And yes, just like a residential bill at one's home, it it has the chart and the usage. So, you know, just to clarify, I do not have a plan. I I kind of said we could have a plan for tracking that and then monitoring maybe which units are higher users. And seeing if, you know, perhaps they're using some sort of appliance or they're just elderly and crank up the heat a little bit more, who knows? But I I do think that we could look at that and then do edu- education tenant education around it. But I just, quite frankly, don't have the bandwidth on my team to to do that quite yet. But we are staying within our budgeted amounts, what we estimated for utility usage. So I wouldn't say it's on an extreme level that we have really, really high utility bills. But of course, things fluctuate depending on the weather. But it is something that we can more closely monitor. And of course, you know, the cheaper we can get our utility bills within reason. That's just money that we can spend on other great things like tenant services.
Okay, thank you very much. And to be clear, there was no intention of any kind of pressure from a housing authority management. But just more I was latching on to what I thought you said was an education program. But it's nice to know that that is a future plan or or a thought and future discussion. So thank you very much.
Mr. Rallo?
Yes, Ms. Scobie, I'm I'm sorry to drag this on, but I I'm not sure I quite understand. So each each unit is metered. So you know the usage of the utilities in each unit. But is that reflected in their rent payment? In other words, if they use a high amount of utilities, is it is it reflected in the rent payment? Or is are all of the utilities aggregated and divided among all all units?
So I mentioned we get the six hundred envelopes every month. Those come to the housing authority accounting department. And we pay those out of the project budgets. We don't assign them to each individual address. The tenant doesn't even see what that bill is. So we just pay the bills and record the expense to the project as a lump sum. So it's it's actually, it's aggregated and it's against the tax credit rules to have additional charges for utility surcharge. So that's within our property management plan that the tenant just pays the rent. And and the owner pays the utilities on an aggregate basis, yes.
So, I mean, I understand the the reasoning behind simplifying one's obligation to pay rent utilities by by having a single payment. Is is part of the reason for that failure to pay? In other words, if you have multiple bills, you know, your the tenant may forget to pay one. And and could you help me out in terms of, you know, the motivation to do this?
Yes, it's we definitely see that with voucher holders that if there's an expensive utility month. So a really cold winter, a high heating bill, they may not have the additional money saved up to pay that bill. So I do think it's a risk that if tenants don't pay the utilities, the utilities are shut off, they're subject to eviction. And we don't want that, of course, we want that housing stability.
Okay, I understand that. Thank you, thank you for clarifying that, those questions.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Ms. Rallo. Any other questions? All right, then we'll take some public comments at this point. We have ability to, it looks like give public each person five minutes to make comment about the ordinance. That's under discussion right now, the Crestmont project. Mr. Lucas, do we have any takers?
Not at the moment. If there are any individuals that would like to speak, please use the raise hand function. In your Zoom control panel, some folks may need to click the participants button or the reaction button. Or if you're not able to find that raise hand feature, you can send a message via chat. And give it a second, but at the moment, I don't see any requests.
All right, thank you, Ms. Scobie, Mr. Allen. And I know there's one other person. Mr. Cashman, thank you very much for your presentation. Are we ready to ask for a do pass local? Mr. Sims?
Oh, no, I was thinking there was going to be final council comments before that.
Oh, shall shall we have final council comments?
I may be improper, you know, like I said, I've been jittery all night. But what I wanted to say is, I do support this. And I was heartened to hear about and at least plans and discussion of a energy efficiency educational plan. I think that'll be important, again, not to be heavy handed, but to make sure that we can get savings where we can without unnecessarily being burdensome. So I was really glad to hear that. And I was also very happy to hear about the solar panels on the other project, even though I knew about that. But thanks for bringing that back and council member Flaherty for bringing that back to my memory. And hopefully, we can do more of those in the future as well. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Sims, Mr. Rallo, did you have a final comment?
I did, just to say that there are pros and cons associated with that single payment model. And I need to ruminate on that a bit more, but overall, I'm supportive. But I'll be passing tonight just because I need to sort that out a bit. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much. Anyone else have a final comment? Mr. Flaherty?
Sure, thanks, just a brief follow up on the same theme, just that I'd like to continue looking in to other options. Of course, it makes sense that we have, you know, sort of debt ratio limits on what we can finance if there's more pressing needs than than something like solar panels. But again, just from a fiscal perspective, because it saves money, because it makes sense, surely there is a model that could inform, you know, a wider spread use in the future. I'm not sure if it'd be like a guaranteed energy savings contract, which is legal in Indiana or or some other type of backing of of a loan for something like that. Something to explore, would love to follow up with with Ms. Scobie and perhaps Alex Carley and and other relevant folks to the city to think a little more about it. So thank you again for helping to inform that that thought, appreciate it.
All right, my final comment would be that the BHA does a great job and and very much appreciate all the efforts and the projects that you you do. And I'm very supportive of this. So anybody else have a final comment before we call for? All right, I will call, I will look at the screen and just call for recommendations, Ms. Scambalory?
Would you like a move do pass?
Do I need to do that?
Yes.
Okay, please do that.
Move do pass?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Scambalory?
Yes.
Ms. Sandberg?
Yes.
Mr. Flaherty?
Yes.
Mr. Sims?
Yes.
Mr. Rallo?
Pass.
Ms. Rosenbarger?
Yes.
And I also will say yes. So that looks like six to one in favor. Did I count that correctly?
Six oh one, actually.
Oh, six oh one. So sorry, no ties in this. Thank you very much, Ms. Scobie, Mr. Allen and Mr. Cashman. So we'll forward that on with a six zero one recommendation. Thank you very much.
Yeah.
All right. Moving on in our agenda, the next item is the historic designation for the area for the Thomas Smith Historic District. I believe there's someone that's going to present Ms. Colum, Colum Brana from Hand. And it looks like Mr. Mr. Zodi, I almost, almost called you Mr. Hand. Mr. Zodi also is popping on, so I will just turn it over to you and please go ahead.
Thank you, Counselor Smith. I'm just going to be brief. I just want to wish you all a good evening and introduce Gloria Colen Brania, who's our Historic Preservation Program Manager here in Hand. She's going to present some great information tonight on 1326 South Pickwick Place, also known as the Thomas Smith House, which the Historic Preservation Commission recommended to you for designation. So she'll build her presentation and we are grateful for your consideration of this tonight on behalf of Historic Preservation Commission and the Hand staff. So Gloria, if you're all teed up, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I, if you will allow me, I would like to share a very quick presentation.
Welcome, go ahead.
Thank you. So visuals are also, are always great when talking about historic properties. So this is the Thomas, Thomas Smith House, 1326 Pickwick Place in, here in Bloomington. So this house has already been surveyed as being a notable structure, notable being the second highest ranking of structural sort of structure, you know, of, of building. I would say historic value. Just a little bit of background here, just mark context of where it is located. The single proposed property consists of two buildings on a 1.8 acre parcel. So the main house is two-story brick federal style I-house, as mentioned a little earlier today. It was built in 1826 by Thomas Smith, who was a founding member of the Bloomington Reformed Presbyterian Church. The other building on the lot is a detached garage built in 2003 and is considered non-contributing. So this property used to be part of a much larger, larger farmland and has since been parceled out into and become much more of a much more urban since then. It is currently owned by Edward Morris, who when submitting a permit to construct an attached garage to his historic house, a cost for demolition delay review to be brought about because the scope of work consisted with a partial demolition of the structure. So the part that was going to be demolished wasn't the historical fabric itself. However, due to the nature of the building, that already caused the whole house to be brought before the Bloomington Historic Preservation Commission. And as it was notable, the commission decided to bring it forward for nomination. It is important to note that both Edward Morris and his wife support this nomination. The Historic Preservation Commission made a motion to bring it to formal designation on May 2nd, 2021. So just a tiny bit more background, Thomas Smith was a leading member, right, of the Covenant Church, which has already been mentioned. But he also donated $500 to help keep Indiana University, then known as State Seminary in Bloomington. So he's one of the reasons that we still have Indiana University here. This was in the 19th century, so $500 went a little further than it does now. He was also purported to be a conductor on the Underground Railroad in an article titled "The Underground Railroad in Monroe County." And Reinsta Smith, his great grandson, and also Dean at Indiana University, asserted that members of the Covenant congregation conducted a section of the Underground Railroad that ran through Monroe County. So the Smith House, as mentioned earlier, is an I-house, vernacular architectural form from the 19th century found. Mainly, it's actually called the I-house because it was first detected in Indiana, Illinois and Iowa. So it's a very traditional form that is found throughout the United States, but mainly in this region. The materials were locally handmade bricks from the property itself. And this architectural style, there are not a lot of these buildings remaining in Bloomington. And it also exemplifies the built environment and then through its very distinctive characteristics. So yeah, this is just a final image and that is it for now. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Colum Brana. Councilmembers, would you like to ask some questions? I'm looking, I'm looking. Mr. Rallo?
Yes, I just wondered if the, the section that, that is added to the brick structure, was that added later? Or is that, is that part of the original structure?
Yeah, that, that was added later.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else have a question? All right. If there are no further questions from council members, then we'll take comments from the public. You can send a note to Mr. Lucas if you'd like to make a comment or raise your hand in chat. And Mr. Lucas will recognize you and will give you five minutes. Go ahead, Mr. Lucas.
Yes, I do see Greg Alexander should now be able to comment.
Go ahead, Alexander.
Thank you. My name is Greg Alexander. I, I love historic structures. I live in a 100-year-old house myself. But I just want to draw your attention to the fact that here we're looking at a single-family residence on 1.8 acres. And 15 minutes ago, we spent a good amount of time, I guess, worrying about whether poor people might use their air conditioners too much. And then in a little bit, you're going to be looking at 233 units on 3.2 acres. So this is luxury, single family that we're talking about here, and I just wanted to acknowledge that. Thanks for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Alexander, for your comments. Mr. Lucas, do we have any other comments?
Not that I see, no.
All right. Final comments from council members? Any takers? Mr. Sims?
Yeah, I'd like to expand on the public comment a little bit. And maybe I'm not seeing this correctly, but with that structure there and the property, is it possible to do some other development outside of the structure? Not the structure itself, but on some of the surrounding, one point, whatever that acre property was. So when we has, when we, if it is historically designated, is that for the entire lot or the, the structure?
John, should I respond?
I'd say Ms. Scanlon is there.
I'm lurking in the background. Um, yes, the historic designation, you scan on Development Service Manager, Planning and Transportation. The historic designation does not preclude the property from being subdivided and used in other ways. Would they still have to be respectful of the historic structure on the site? Yes, but other development could occur and subdivision. Were there to be enough room for that? It could occur.
Thank you.
Answer your question, Mr. Sims?
Yes, well, we'll have more later, but yes, that was good for tonight. Thank you.
All right. Any other final comments? On the Thomas Smith designation? All right, I will accept a motion for a do pass.
Move do pass?
Second.
All right. I will call the role from, as I see people on the screen again, Ms. Gambalory?
Yes.
Ms. Sandberg?
Yes.
Mr. Flaherty?
Yes.
Mr. Sims?
Yes, sorry.
Mr. Rallo?
Yes.
Mr. Rosenbarger?
Yes.
And I, I also vote yes. That's seven zero. To approve that and send that forward. Thank you very much, Ms. Colum Brana, Mr. Zodi. Appreciate that. Uh, next item on the agenda is to amend, it's the PUD off of Petelus Drive. There are some changes to this that, so it's an amendment to the zoning maps by amending the district ordinance and curumany plan of the Curry PUD at 105 South Petelus Drive. Curry Urban Properties is the petitioner, and I believe Ms. Scanlon is here to present. And go ahead.
Great, thank you. Can you see my screen here?
Yes, ma'am.
Great, thank you. As Mr. Smith said, this property is located on the east side of town. The property is a planned unit development currently owned by Curry Urban Properties. It is located at the northwest corner of East Longview Avenue and South Petelus. It was rezoned at the beginning of 2020 to planning to development. It's 3.2 acres. The comprehensive plan shows this property at the very southeast corner of the Regional Activity Center slash Focus Area for the new hospital and learning center site on the bypass, and the property is currently undeveloped. The reason you are seeing this, this property again so soon is that the petitioner is working with a new developer. And he would like to change some of the characteristics of the preliminary plan that was approved by this body. The original preliminary plan that they submitted indicated that they only intended to do studios, one bedrooms, two bedrooms at the site. They would like to add the option of three bedrooms as well. And they have also redesigned the building, as you can see, kind of on this aerial conceptual plan here, in such a way that the parking structure there on the east side of the building would be completely wrapped by units, and that's different than what you saw before. The reason that is important is that there was a reasonable condition put on the petition by this body requiring some masking of the parking garage. It's very specific about what that needed to be, including green walls, and that wouldn't be possible, obviously, with this design. And they are also asking to increase the maximum height allowable by roughly two and a half feet. So there are a couple of additional smaller development standard changes that they're requesting. Under the previous petition, 15 feet was listed as the setback on the northern property line. In the current request, that would go down to 10 feet at the stair tower, which still meets the requirement, which still exceeds the requirements for the base zoning district used for the development standards of this planned unit development, which is commercial limited. The base standard is seven feet. And so in the large majority of the, of the northern facade would be 15 feet back, but a small portion of the state where the stair towers located would be 10. They are also requesting to officially change their open space allowable, their, excuse me, their impervious surface coverage to change from 34% to 33%. Code actually allows a 1% change so that when a percentage is included in a planned unit development, they can go 1% greater or of coverage, but they just wanted to acknowledge that they were doing that and not have to use that kind of code exception. The building will still be four stories in height, but the tallest point will change from 57 feet to 59 and a third. And previously, they had indicated that they were planning to do 29 dwelling unit equivalents per acre with a maximum of 30, and with this design, they would be at 30. So again, not changing the maximum that they proposed, but going to that maximum where they were going to be just under before. So in the, as I mentioned in the old PUD, the max, the largest units would be two bedrooms. Now they're proposing three. They are not proposing additional units. They were previously showing 264 units and they are now at 233 units. And also the beds went down slightly. The bedrooms went from 344 to 341. So what they've indicated to us is that, you know, based on the way that they normally build and how their units are normally laid out, that is, that is why they need to do the three units to kind of fit in the corners of the building. And not, it is not intended to gain bedrooms at the site. So this is the old layout you can see here, as I mentioned before, and the new layout, which you've already seen. And additional changes that they had listed the commercial space as a range of 12,000 to 19,000 square feet, and that is here along the eastern side of the building. Now they are saying that it will be 14,000. They know, they have a greater plan than they had previously, know exactly how much they'd like to have, and that number is 14,000. They are also reducing the parking spaces from 306 to 254. So this is a similar, this is the same conceptual elevation they showed previously. They're not, this is looking northwest with Pete Ellis here on the right. And so this is the intersection of Longview and Petelus. They still plan to have most of what you see here. These cisterns were a part of the original plan. Those, they have found that they won't be able to make them functional and they would like to remove those. But largely the architecture of this side will remain the same. So these are the old elevations. You can see, this is the west side on Seventh Street. This is the north elevation, and you can see here in the center, this is open parking garage. And so that will be gone. In the new plan, it will be all units facing the north. So again, here is the, the second one down here is the north elevation, and you can see that it is all units with no opening for the parking garage. So I think for us, the largest change for the elevation, while we do see, as staff and planning commission agreed, wrapping the parking garage as a positive in general. This body had kind of made the, the green wall requirement for the parking garage as a focal point and interest on the south side of, of the property here, and that will be gone. So you get kind of a more monolithic look than maybe we had, we're going to have before with the breakup of units on the left, on the west, units on the east, and then the covered parking garage in the center. So this is the new south. You can see here, this little gray rectangle is the entrance. We are recommending that this portion here immediately west still be required to have some sort of green feature or art feature to provide some sort of visual interest or breakup of this long frontage. So you can see here where the two areas where I'm talking about that largely change. And you can see that they've made some other changes as well. Reducing some of these higher parapets, and you can see like the stair tower in the back here. I think that the petitioner can speak to this more, but I think the plans they have now are slightly more architecturally designed than those that they had previously. For those who don't know, this, because this is the preliminary plan of a PUD, you're not actually approving, you know, a specific building or site plan. You're approving an idea for a zoning, a zoning code for this lot and what can go here. But because this is a lot with just one building, we typically get pretty detailed on those. And so that's why we're coming to you with these specific questions. So in the new renderings, this would be the area where we'd be asking them to do something interesting. They have said, you know, does that really make sense? It's kind of recessed. We think it's probably the, the best spot as most of the rest of the frontage is covered with windows, but we're open to suggestions, of course. As I mentioned, near the very bottom corner of the focus area for the new hospital site. The proposed PUD amendments we found do not change the intent of this planned unit development. It offers some unique architectural design for this area, which has mostly been developed much. Much like decades ago, and not a lot of new development in this area. And offers a range of benefits and features for the tenants. And we think that obviously, of course, this adds to our housing stock. What they have indicated previously and are still saying is that the, you know, the reason this site was chosen was because of its close proximity to the new hospital site and targeting those individuals. As well, one additional change in the PUD is that the previous PUD specifically said that the commercial area would be targeted toward medical. The new version says that as well, but puts in a caveat that they would market to other individuals if they're not able to fill it. So the plan commission heard this petition and recommended approval at their June hearing, eight to zero with quite a few conditions. Part of the reason there are so many conditions is that this body had put on six reasonable conditions when they heard the petition, the beauty the first time, and we incorporated those here as conditions. So our typical plan commission conditions are located here as well as those that the council included. Number six was amended at plan commission. You may recall that the previous condition was that a traffic study would be done at final plan stage, and that was it. It didn't have a lot of teeth. This, this. Condition has been changed and reads as follows. The petitioner will submit a traffic study for review with the application for final plan approval. If the traffic study indicates that improvements are warranted, such improvements will be installed before final occupancy is issued and the financial design and installation responsibility of the petitioner or future owner, unless otherwise determined by City of Bloomington. So that's fairly typical. If the installation of a project is going to cause enough traffic that new signal is required, then it should be the responsibility of that developer to install and pay for that signal. So that's what we've included here. And then we've left in a caveat in case, for example, they don't develop this for a couple of years, the hospital opens first and a signal is warranted before this even is built. Then they can work with the City of Bloomington to have shared responsibility. And I will point out that number 11 is also a condition that was a reasonable condition. The petitioners proposed to amend it because the top floor of the parking garage will no longer be enclosed. And so the proposed amendment is here. Plan commission did not take that up. I mentioned it and they just didn't change it. I don't know if that was intentional. It wasn't discussed heavily, but just in case that, you all wanted to discuss that. I believe councilperson Flaherty was the one who drafted the initial reasonable condition and he was comfortable with the change. But I'm not sure if that's something you all want to incorporate. So again, 14 conditions located there, and I can answer any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Scanlon. Questions from council members? Mr. Flaherty.
Yes, to follow up on that last, one of the last points Ms. Scanlon made there. I think you did presentation. You mentioned that I was the one who brought the reasonable condition originally related to green or white roofs. And how a uncovered top of a parking garage wouldn't necessarily fit with that the most well. I remember certainly another project we had recently discussing this concept. I think we looked at those UDO standards for like the. Reflectivity or the, how, how light the, the surface of the, of the garage was. Had we already looked at that somehow? You, you mentioned that I was comfortable with the, the change.
It was for this. It was when this went to plan commission, they asked.
We corresponded about it.
You and I discussed it because I wanted to be able to tell plan commission whether or not the, the sponsor of that reasonable condition was comfortable with the change.
Yes, thank you for refreshing my memory. It's this project then that I am thinking of. It's just been months since I've looked at it. So, so yes, I did some digging and looked into the kind of industry practice for, for an open, an opener structure like that and how to reduce the heat island effect through paint or surface color. And, and, and it seemed like, like what's in the UDO is reasonable to me. Following up on that, though, would we need to incorporate that in the form of an amendment to the reasonable condition from here, which is not prepared yet, but could be for. When, when we actually consider a vote at council, is that right? I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry. Of course, this may be a question for legal, but I believe that because this is a new petition and amendment. Those six other reasonable conditions, we've already incorporated them in this petition. So if you want to make changes to these conditions, you'd have to do a new reasonable condition.
Okay, and it would, it would function to replace. The one that's there now.
I believe it, yeah, if it was written that way, I believe so. And Stephen can correct me if that's incorrect.
And sorry, just final clarification point. Absent passing a new reasonable condition like that, the, the current. Draft ordinance or the current ordinance as, as drafted would still require a white or green roof as, as originally included, right?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Flaherty. Mr. Sims.
Thank you. So will the petitioners. I guess at some point in their future, do a traffic study? And I guess I'm, I'm talking about that now because there's been some intimation that. There could be additional traffic along Pet Ellis that could be hospital related. And I'm just paraphrasing here, I'm not quoting anyone, but it's like, it's not all our traffic. Why do we have to be responsible for the traffic like? And from an argue, from a discussion deliberation standpoint, you're going to have to have something now to compare to later.
Yes.
Would be the way that I'm saying.
Do one.
Okay, is that, do you know when that will be?
So if this were to pass.
Something, I thought I heard you say that they might do something that if they do, it'll be after the hospital opens.
They have to do a traffic study before, when they file for a final plan. So a final plan is like a site plan and a planned unit development. When they, they're already getting their paperwork together to do that. So a final traffic study is imminent for them.
Okay, may I follow up here just one more?
Thank you.
When we heard this last time, the addition now is the three bedrooms. And I understand the overall beds, I think, is probably one or two less. But I think that was one of the big discussions, particularly from the community with three bedrooms. And there was something that I just heard, I'm thinking. Marketing. The market to other individuals. Did I hear that correctly? And I'm not, I'm not, definitely not anti-student. I think we all know that, but we do have other zoning, I mean, other plans for that. So.
Right, so.
What I'm asking.
Yes, I think so. So let me know if this answers it. They have said before and are continuing to say that the main intention of this building is to be housing for those who will be utilizing and working at the new hospital site, which is also a teaching center. So there are students there as well. But yes, the, the marketing, I mo, I meant mostly for the commercial space. Yes.
So if there's need for home offices. It just makes sense to me that you build a home office and not a bedroom as part of the plan.
Right, they could be used in that way.
Well, I know they can be used, but we both know that probably not if they have the three bedrooms. So again, okay, thank you. I just want to, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sims. Mr. Rallo.
Thanks, Ms. Scanlon. Just one question I had was the setback for 10 feet. How many linear feet is that setback at the stair tower to occupy very, very much?
Sure, they may be able to answer that more specifically than I, but you. I'm not sure.
It's a small, it's a small area.
Yes, it's a small area. I believe there's one stair tower at the northwest, northeast corner of the building.
Okay. I had a couple others, is that right?
Sure, I didn't know if Mr. Curry wanted to chime in on the stair tower. Oh.
Um, Jason is also the representative for this petition, just FYI.
Oh, okay. Anybody else want to chime in on that question for Mr. Rallo? All right, go ahead, Mr. Rallo.
Okay. We'll find out. It's probably not a major, major, major obstacle here, but you know, I'm, I'm concerned about. I mean, I realize that the parking garage is not going to be evident, but we did have sort of a, a green screen on that, which sort of broke up the facade. And now it seems like it is, you know, the, the articulation of the building looks. Monolithic, more monolithic than it, than, than it was, seems to me. So my question is, you know, we don't have anything to do with final design, I guess. It's going to go to the plan commission for that, is that right, Ms. Scanlon?
Yes, and, yes and no. I mean, you're approving the rules that they have to work within, and those of our, you've already approved those. I mean, what they're proposing now fits within those. The reason they have to come back is because that reasonable condition related to the green wall can't be met now and have to meet all reasonable conditions. So it's no, you don't do design, but in this case, because that reasonable condition was so specific to the design of the building, you are able, you are weighing in on that, basically. But yes, it will go to the, I believe it will go to the plan commission unless they delegate it to staff. I'd have to check.
Okay.
Yeah, I believe it is delegated to staff, sorry.
Is it? Okay, all right. Well, and being staff, you, you refer to a, a certain area of the building that you had. That you found problematic. And I didn't quite understand if. If, if that was, if we needed to weigh in on that? If you were.
I think. Sure. Yeah, I think I'm pointing it out because, okay, so this is what you were getting with the reasonable condition, you know, this whole area to be covered by green. And what we've proposed and is in the proposed conditions as well, is that. Something will have to be done with this area, this open area here immediately adjacent to the entrance, just to kind of give you all a scale of how that's changing. So it's kind, it's obviously a much smaller area, but that was our kind of best shot at doing some sort of. Breaking up that wasn't necessarily just the, you know, height and five foot. Setbacks that we see along the rest of the building.
So what you've accomplished there, if I, if I understand you, is that it's recessed.
Well, it's recessed and we're asking that a green wall still be incorporated in this corner here.
Green wall there, oh, okay, okay. By the way, since you had that previous rendering, could you put it back?
Sure.
The comparison, and I assume all the street trees are going to be. Incorporated, right? Okay. All right, well, that's all I have for now. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else in the council have a question? I have a couple of questions that I'd like to ask about reasonable condition number eight. Which is a. The property owner was sure no sound application device will be used in an amphitheater. And I guess I would like if you can tell me, it says that produces sound in violation of Bloomington Municipal Code 14.09 Noise Control. Can you, can you kind of? Talk me through that a little bit? What, what does that mean?
Sure, I may have to get you more details for next time, but basically the amphitheater is located here in the northwest portion. It's basically just like a tiered outdoor seating area. And there had been discussion about, you know, sort of letting people utilize that for instruments and small events and things. So there was concern from the neighbors to the north. That noise control code is not something that is enforced by. Planning and transportation, and this was added as a reasonable condition by council. But it does, I believe that there are hours of noise and then possibly also decibels at the property line, but I can look into that and let you know when we're back.
Okay, yeah, I think the decibels and the, the hours would be really great. That was one of the neighbors really concerns was the amplification devices. So thank you, if you can follow up on that, that'd be great.
Great.
And number nine, I wanted to ask about. They can assure that no light emanating, emanating from the amphitheater again. You know, that was, that was a neighborhood concern. And it looks like it's in UDO 20.04.090. Is that something you, you'd like to follow up on as well and kind of talk us through that as well at the next time?
Sure, I can speak to that more now. That is something we enforce, my, the staff that I work with. And that is lighting that's required to be downward facing and shielded. And there is a light trespass numbers that we use lumens. And we can look, what we do is when they submit their lighting package, anyone new, commercial in town or multifamily, we look for their light specifications and see how much they're emanating. And then we can make sure we require a light study to make sure that they're not. Providing too much light over their property line to the properties adjacent.
Okay.
So that's something we do standard, but it was kind of put in as a, to make sure that everyone was on the same page, I believe, as a reasonable condition.
Right, and that, and, and again, that was concerns from the neighborhood right there and the people who live in the apartments. Okay, thank you very much. Any, any other council member have an additional question? Mr. Rallo.
Yes, Ms. Scanlon, could you refresh my memory and, and put back up the rendering of the streetscape? Did that include commercial retail on the first floor?
Yes.
Okay.
It is commercial retail on this portion of the, on the Longview frontage.
And that's on Pet Ellis?
I'm sorry, on the Pet Ellis frontage, yes.
Yeah, Pet Ellis, okay. And, and how much of that is, is that the entire?
It's the entirety of the frontage along Pet Ellis, I believe. And then it wraps on Longview, which will be some of the, like apartment offices for the facility, but not residential units on that first floor at the southeast corner.
Okay, thank you for that.
Thank you. Any other questions from council members? All right, let's go to the public. If the public would, anyone from the public would like to make a comment. Please raise your hand or send a note to Mr. Lucas in the chat, and we'll recognize you. And you have five minutes to make a comment. Mr. Lucas, you're on.
Yes, and I do see a couple of folks that would like to comment. For anyone that wishes to do so, please use the raise hand function. You can click the participants button on your screen. Some folks may need to click the more option to find the raise hand feature. And if you've dialed in, I believe star nine will raise your hand if you're on a telephone. So all of that fails and you're able to send a chat to let me know that you'd like to comment, please do so. First up, Steve Akers.
Go ahead, Mr. Akers, when, when you're able to, go ahead.
Hey, everybody. Hi, this is Steve Akers. I'm in the Park Ridge neighborhood. I wanted to make a couple of comments tonight about the development. We had a meeting this afternoon on Google. Connie Glenn and I had a meeting with Tyler Curry to discuss some of the changes that were proposed. I shared some of that information with you, Ron, this afternoon on email. So we still have a bit of a concern about the shade issue to the north that would shade the Cambridge Square Apartments. I don't think the building really has changed. The fourth floor, I think, is set back a little bit. So I would encourage the, the new, I don't know if you're aware of it was mentioned that there's a new developer now, a new, or a new builder, a new architect, a totally new person. So that they're familiar with our concerns about the shade study that was done. That's a big concern for the Cambridge Square Apartment residents about shading their, their building so many months out of the year. Another item that we. Another item that we brought up with Tyler was the, the traffic study that I, I thank Jackie that picked out and Jim Sims, President Sims, mentioned that the traffic study would be important to have done, that it's imminent. Not to speak for Mr. Curry, because I think he's next, but he, he was pretty concerned about his responsibility about whether that intersection would need his investment if it were to change in terms of addressing additional traffic before the hospital was put in. So I'm sure he's going to talk about that and, you know, how much responsibility he is the developer has over that, that potential to change that and the cost involved. The amphitheater, I think that's been addressed. Coming from a residential facility background, I think really that the management of the amphitheater is more an issue of onsite management, once this place is built, and how they manage that amphitheater and, and, and what they do to provide for sound and things like that, and how it's going to impact the neighbors around it. So I guess what I'm asking for is if they could pledge that there would be some sort of parameters about how the amphitheater is used and whether it's going to be, you know, Woodstock 2022, or if it's going to be acoustic or whatever, just so it's not really loud. So that's, that's good that we talked about that. We talked a little bit about the delivery, the delivery trucks, and they've addressed that in terms of making sure that the Amazon trucks and everyone else is not going to be blocking Longview when they deliver to the main office for the residents. So we were kind of satisfied that that's been addressed. We did talk about the art. I think it's still, the new developer or the new builder said that he was still, he, he's proposing some local art that might be in the office area inside, but he's not fully on board with that yet because he wants to get the proposal approved before he starts investing time in where the art would be and who would be doing it and things like that. So that's, that's still a little bit out there. And then finally, this change to the three bedroom apartments. I'm still wary of it. I, I hope it's not masking that this could be another undergraduate, undergraduate resident facility that we really don't need. And it's, and I'm really hesitant now when I hear Jackie mention that if they don't fill it with medical related staff residents, that they would be able to fill it with someone else. So I think we need to be careful with what we're agreeing to. Because again, we're already going to have, you know, the, the huge place over at the Latimer over on Third Street, and we really would love to see this successful with medical, medical related staff with the hospital living there 12 months out of the year and that it wouldn't sit empty all summer, that the retail would be supported and successful. I think that's the only way to get that hopefully would be if we as residents around it and 12 month residents would be, would be located there rather than undergraduates that would be moving out and only there eight and a half months out of the year. So again, we'll, we'll continue to follow this as a group and I thank you for the time. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Akers. Shall we take more public comment and then we'll allow Mr. Curry and Mr. Jasson to respond? So I think maybe Ms. Mills? If you can give her an opportunity to speak. There you go. Thank you, Ms. Mills.
I live on Longview Drive, and so Pete Ellis and Longview and Kingston are all very familiar streets to me. I'm concerned with the tendency to build and then deal with the traffic. I was on 10th Street for a while. We have a new hospital opening up and it looks like it could be three to four years before the Pete Ellis very bad intersection gets improved. We have Kmart developed by Trinitas. And I'm really concerned about what's happening at the traffic light on Kingston and Third. And when I'm leaving Blooming Foods, I use Kingston and I use Longview. And if I'm going north, I use Longview all the way to Seventh Street Extension to get to the bypass. These are pretty normal routes. But they're normal routes for a relatively low amount of traffic and they're not great roads. And I'm concerned that we have three different things coming online within a few years of each other. But yet, we won't be able to do a traffic study to find out what happens when all three are there. And I think the roads are unprepared for that. And it would kind of be nice to be able to get out of my neighborhood. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Mills. I, are there any other members of the public, Mr. Lucas, that you see? Before we have Mr. Curry and Mr. Jasson comment?
I, I don't see any additional members of the public and I will just mention, I believe, Mr. Curry and the petitioner representatives should be able to mute and unmute or turn on their video if they, if you'd like to offer them a chance to, to comment now.
All right, go ahead, Mr. Curry.
Yes, thank you, council, for hearing our petition tonight for these amendments. I appreciate that. So much has changed since this was approved several months ago. However, I do want to say that I think it's important to note for those that are paying attention that Al Lupton and his architectural group have been involved with this project from day one. So we have not changed architectural firms and Mr. Lupton is dialed in on what has been said, what has been done, what we can do, and he hears everything that everybody is saying. So there should be some solace in that knowing we've engaged the same person from day one. You know, I don't want to make too much of the amphitheater and, and I think that too much has been made. I think we should just probably coin it something else, because an amphitheater, it truly is not. This turned into, this ended up being a green space area that we coined amphitheater. And, and doing that has caused more anxiety than really I think, I think is necessary. Number one, we are not marketing this as an amphitheater area. We are not, as a management company, going to schedule entertainment venues so that, you know, people who went to Woodstock can, can make this an additional stop on their way. This is simply just a, a green area that happens to drop in elevation and is tiered and will be a nice area to sit and read a book or just hang out. But I, I, I don't want people to think that we're marketing this to the, to the music students and to people that have bands as a place to come and play, because that's not what it's going to be. And that's not even our intentions. So I think starting out of the gate, we just need to call it something else. And if this is going to come back around, I, I think we'll do that to, to, to drop that anxiety of the neighbors and the people that are paying attention. You know, so much has changed for, in our economy in the last several months too. And material escalation prices have gone through the roof in every market segment in the construction industry, as well as the availability and lead times to deliver these goods. So one of the things that was found is, you know, we are able to offset these costs, especially lumber, by adding some three bedroom income to our portfolio. And on top of that, this is kind of what Scannell does. Scannell Properties is a company that I partnered with after the original PUD was formed, because the partnership that I had didn't quite meet the standards that I wanted going forward. And I was, had a relationship with some Scannell employees and, and it kind of led to a partnership. And I've really been impressed with, you know, their outlook and approach to this whole situation. And Tom Jason will be able to answer some very pointed questions. But I feel like our meeting today with Connie and Steve went very well. I think we addressed a lot of their, their questions. I don't think the shadow study is any different than it was, because nothing has changed. So I think that becomes kind of a moot point and we can't, just can't continue to reduce the size of the building, but that's not why we're in front of you. We're in front of you because of these amendments. And these amendments are based on facts that we have found out during the due diligence period. Some of these were going to come up anyway, because now we have better information from Bynum Fanyo Associates. Al Lupton and his company have dialed in and, and the building is really starting to take its real shape. So setbacks and two and a half inches of, or two and a half feet of height on the southeast corner or southwest corner are just things that were going to come up anyway. And so we're just addressing those right now. So I don't want you to fear that we're trying to make this a student oriented property. I mean, we cannot discriminate who lives in our building. Absolutely cannot do that. And I think that we all understand that. What we are doing though is marketing this towards a work-life balance sort of demographic. And that really plays into the hands of the hospital. So we're going to do what we can to market the, the heck out of it to that work-life balance sort of occupation. But at the end of the day, we cannot discriminate who lives in our building. And so I hope that you consider these amendments. The project has already been approved. We came back to you because, you know, this is what the process is. And that's really all I have to say for now. But again, thank you very much. And Tom Jason will be able to answer some more direct questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Curry. Mr. Jason, would you like to make some comments?
Sure, absolutely. Thanks, thanks for your time this evening. I'm a development manager with Scannell Properties multifamily team. We partnered with Tyler to pursue this development. And although we came in late and somewhat inherited a previously approved plan, we've been working with Tyler hand in hand. We understand the project history and have respected what previous commitments and accommodations have been made in the past. And these amendments are not meant to try and backtrack on any of those. And we feel that the two major changes, which are really the shifting of the garage and the three bedroom units, really enhance the project. The previous commitments, like the public art, the pocket park improvement, improving the multimodal bike path from eight to 12 feet. And the reasonable conditions or their intents are all largely continuing to be met. So very quickly, just to follow up on a couple of the questions I heard from both council and the public. I measured the stair tower and it will be 11 feet long. And it is only protruding because it's necessary for egress. That's another one of those items that Tyler mentioned that it probably was going to surface regardless of any other changes that we're, we are making. And big picture, the proposed changes are primarily economically and data driven, meant to improve the viability of the project and the overall offering we want to bring to Bloomington. To answer Mr. Akers' question on the shade and Al Lupton, with Lupton Roush is, is here as well. He might be able to speak to this a little bit better. But the overall massing has not changed, even with the shift of the garage and the inclusion of the three bedroom units. The fourth floor on that north side still has several setbacks between five and seven feet. So we feel that it has not shifted or has become less burdensome to the northern property than what we could have built by right. Also, the wrapping of the garage should buffer any light and sound that would have emanated from, or illuminated or amplified from vehicles parked in the garage. And then the last question, just to touch on the three bedrooms once again, I think Tyler summarized it very well. We have seen, through our due diligence and research, we have seen an increase in demand for some of these larger units and just feel that it's prudent to include some of these to better meet the needs and preferences of some of the potential residents. But at the same time, we are including these by way of converting about 50% of our two bedroom units. So it's less than 15% of the total units. And we still are including almost 70% of studios and one beds, which we feel is an extremely attractive and a unit mix that's very conducive to young professionals that we're targeting with the work-life balance that Tyler mentioned. Those were all the questions I had. I apologize if I missed anyone's. Again, thank you for your time this evening and for your consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Jason. Are there other comments that anybody wants to make? We have final comments coming up. Ms. Rosenberg?
Thanks. I just, I'm sorry if I'm just slow on this uptake, but I just wanted to ask, do we have that due diligence about the three bedroom conversion? Is that in the packet? Like, I really just skimmed this today, so like, I'm just wondering like what that looks like, like what the demographics are of people looking for three bedrooms? Just because, I mean, we heard earlier tonight from BHA that three bedrooms are not at all in demand and like the waitlist, I mean, this is affordable housing, but the waitlist for one bedroom is pretty much off the charts right now. So can we see that data? Or do I, do I already have it?
Mr. Jason, go ahead.
The data was not included in the petition, but just to highlight, in our research and what we found, affordable housing is very different than market rate. And portfolio wide, we are incorporating more larger units in all of our properties. So there are specific metrics within Bloomington or Monroe County that support the need for larger units and trends nationwide that support it. I think it's important to note that the average household size in Bloomington is 2.26. And of all households that are renters, 75% of them, or sorry, 43% of them are households that do not live alone of the total households that are renters. So 42% or 43% versus 15% of the total stack of units is just one of the few data points that we saw that caught our eye and we see a need in the market. And again, only 15% of the total units, just adding a greater variety to our total offering. Hope that answers your question.
Other final comments from council members? Ms. Sandberg?
This, of course, went through the plan commission with great thoughtfulness and questioning and consideration. And one of the side conversations that we were kind of seeing from the public who were attending the meeting was that if this is designed to be for young professionals or professionals who may be in some way associated with the hospital, that people who are providing direct care in the hospital are not going to be working from home, like your nursing staff and your doctor's staff. And that kind of was brought up as why people might, might be attracted to a three bedroom apartment to maybe convert one of the bedrooms into a more private office space for the work at home folks. But as has been brought forward by Mr. Curry, they cannot guarantee any of us who is going to rent those apartments, who is going to find that location attractive or the, the nearness, the proximity, whether it's to the new hospital or whether it's to the, the retail activity around the, the College Mall area. But certainly a family with two different gender children could certainly be attracted to a three bedroom unit. And so I don't think any of us should be, you know, predicting who possibly will be the tenants. And the, the addition of the three bedrooms is a consideration for economics with the increasing cost of, of construction and all the materials that it takes. And so I think we all very respectfully listened to this change and felt comfortable in accepting it. As the backs on the grounds changed, so did the design plans and Plan Commission was very comfortable with that. and Plan Commission was very comfortable with that. Do I have concerns about the traffic study? Yes, I do. And so I'm hopeful that the city and everyone involved in all the new developments going up, and it was good of one of the public speakers to talk about the Trinitas project there at the old Kmart site, in addition to the new traffic that is going to occur with the new hospital and its teaching campus. So we have a lot of things to look forward to and to problem-solve for in the future. But I'm confident that we can do it and that we will do it, and that as we see congestion and issues arise, we will have the wherewithal to deal with that. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Sandberg. Mr. Rallo?
I had some other questions, but I suppose I could reserve those for next time or maybe in the interim. So my overall impression is, I don't think the setback change is problematic to me. I think that the three-bedroom amendment is not problematic to me for the reasons that Councilmember Sandberg stated. It seems reasonable to assume that it increases the marketing viability to hospital staff and families and so forth. So I think that that is actually benign or actually improvement. So reduction in parking spaces seems a positive step, I think. I think this is a walkable area for, if that's what I understood. Mr. Jason, is that correct? Reduction in parking spaces was part of this proposal?
That is correct. Previous proposal was over 300, and this total has reduced it to 258. And that is by, or that's a function of keeping the maximum, the previous maxims in place, which were 0.7 per bed or 0.9 per unit, and then 250 per, or one per 250 square feet of commercial space.
Okay.
So it's reduced almost 40 spaces.
Yeah, so if this is, it's proximal to the hospital, it's, you know, walking distance to a lot of commercial activity, I think that, you know, people can do without a car. And so that recognizes this. I think wrapping the garage has advantages for noise and light. The only really problem I have is that the facade changes quite a bit. And so I need to think about this in terms of, you know, breaking up that facade, because it seemed to me, just aesthetically, it was more monolithic than it was. And I'm interested in this idea of tiering. Now, you know, this is another question. May I ask a question, another question?
Please go ahead.
Chair Smith? So, Mr. Jason, the street rendering had, you know, it was attractive because it had commercial activity, retail on the first floor, and then you had apartments. And it seemed to tier. Is that, is that, am I interpreting that correctly? That 3D rendering?
Yes.
Okay. And is, will that be, is that going to be maintained? That kind of?
Yes.
Stepwise? Okay.
That facade along Pete Ellis will all remain largely the same with terrace feel, setbacks second and third, fourth floor.
Okay, that looks much more humane than obviously, you know, just a monolithic linear front. So, and I assume that the final design approval by staff, they'll pay attention to that. And did the materials, there's no materials change in this? I think we queried you on that before. They remain the same?
That's correct.
Okay. So, you know, overall, and then lastly, the traffic is very problematic. And as the, I don't remember her name, but she made a very good point, that we have a number of developments happening at once here. And what we really need is a comprehensive study. Besides the specific study for this, for this building, I think that we need a comprehensive study to figure out what the impact is going to be with all of this additional housing and activity that's going to go on there. So that's something that we'd need to consider. That's our responsibility. So overall, I give this a positive, I have a positive view of this, but I need to think on it a bit more, so I'll be passing this evening. But I think overall, I'm not troubled by the amendments, per se, that they've included in this PUD. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rallo. Any other final comments? Mr. Sims?
Thank you. No really comments. But I was wondering, Mr. Jason, I think I pronounced that correctly, mentioned some data points and some other information that I'm not so sure we were privy to, at least from their end. So can we have access to that, those data that you were talking about?
Yeah, I'm happy to share it.
Specifically the housing and your research and data on housing. And you mentioned Monroe County and some trends and that sort of thing. So I think that would be helpful.
Sure.
Mr. Jason, will you send that to Mr. Lucas?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Scambolary?
Yes, thank you. Thank you to the petitioners and staff and Plan Commission for helping think through this. I appreciate, and I especially appreciate the discussion tonight. I'm going to pass for tonight, but here's, here's what I'm thinking on this. I have, as I look at my notes, I wound up with two columns of things on this particular project, stuff I'm worried about and stuff I'm not worried about. And I would agree with a lot of what I heard about things that, okay, we wanted to ask about it, but it's not really a concern. I feel better about the facade now. I think that's more manageable. I'm actually not concerned about the amphitheater. Right with you on the notion of just rename that thing, call it a plaza or something. But it only becomes an amphitheater if there is a programming entity associated with it. And there isn't one, but it's a space. And I, just for fun, I found an online source, and I entered amphitheater, and it was generating words like arena and theater in the round. It's kind of like, no, that's not what it is. So those are the kinds of things I'm not particularly concerned about. The increase in three bedrooms, I think, can make sense. You know, again, people do have home offices. We may attract professionals with young children, so I think that may make sense. The questions I do still have, traffic is really kind of making me fret about what, about what's going on on East Third, because there is a lot going on, the reach, and just as we're welcoming all these new residential areas, the retail climate is also changing in some ways. And malls, do they see the traffic they used to? Probably not. But what does that mean for that area? So I still have some concerns there that I just want to think about some more. But I used to live on Longview many moons ago, and it seemed like a busy intersection then, and that was a long time ago. And this particular chunk of land is going from zero residents to a bunch. So I can't help but think that we need to be a little more thoughtful about traffic and what that's going to do. So I'm going to pass tonight, but I appreciate very much the presentation and the discussions. And I think it's a positive project. I just want to ponder it some more. So, thank you.
Any other questions, final comments? Mr. Flaherty?
Yes, just briefly, that I think the changes we're looking at are pretty minimal on a project we already approved. I think they're entirely reasonable, given the context and circumstances. So I'm happy to support it. A brief follow-up on what I mentioned at the beginning of my questions. Albido was the word that was escaping my mind. Albido measures the reflectivity of a surface, a scale from zero to one. And there's a section of the UDO that specifies what parking structures should be. And I did some digging when Ms. Scanlon had reached out previously, and what's in our code matches LEED standards, LEED before. So I felt comfortable with that switch from a cooler vegetated roof to a service reflectance or solar reflectance value in line with what's in the UDO under the Sustainable Development Incentives. So I'd be happy to bring an amendment or sponsor an amendment next week to make that change in line with what petitions requested. So I just wanted to note that here, and otherwise, I think I'm all good. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Any other questions or final comments? Ms. Scanlon?
Sorry, I know this is a weird time. I neglected to mention and should have, in case this comes to anyone's minds, that in the original approval, there was an agreement with the Housing and Neighborhood Development Department for 15% of bedrooms to be workforce housing, and those will be studios and one-beds. And that agreement carries forward, so nothing about that is changing. So especially in line with some of the things that Ms. Scobie was saying tonight, it'd be nice to have some smaller units available in this part of town for our workforce housing.
Thank you very much. I'd like to ask about, so the concept came up, a comprehensive traffic study. Ms. Scanlon, can you talk about that a little bit and comment on the idea of a comprehensive traffic study for the area?
Sure.
With all the different things happening?
Yeah, so that would be something I'd like to speak to the city engineer about and get back to you all at the next hearing. But I will say that at the Plan Commission hearing, he did speak about how, for example, IU has already done a traffic study related to the hospital. So the, I believe that there is a reasonable way to kind of project the traffic in this area based on that study for that use. When the traffic study is done for this area, I believe those things can be compared and aggregated. But I will speak to him about that and see if I can get some kind of more information about how those work together. And then also, if there are concerns for the Third Street corridor in general in this area.
Yes. Thank you very much. I'm supportive of the, I don't think the project has changed much. I'm supportive of it. But I'm really concerned about the traffic and the impact on the neighborhood right there on the edge of the neighborhood. So thank you. Anything you can do to kind of bring that, bring some more information to that next time we need, it'd be really great. So, thank you. Any other final comments? Mr. Rallo?
Ms. Scanlon, this may have been already addressed in this previous iteration of this project, but did we, is Bloomington Transit going to accommodate this development? Or does it, I can't remember, does it have a bus that runs?
I can't remember. Yes, buses do go by here, so I think a stop is incorporated, but I will verify that for next.
Okay, that would be helpful. That's needed. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else feel the need to make a comment?
Move to pass?
All right, I will call Rallo. Ms. Scambolary?
I'll pass this evening.
Ms. Sandberg?
Yes.
Mr. Rallo?
Pass.
Mr. Flaherty?
Yes.
Mr. Sims?
Yes.
Ms. Rosenberg?
Yes.
And I will say yes as well. So who's got the score on that one?
Five, zero, two.
Two, yes.
Thank you very much. So that will be forwarded with a 5-4-2 recommendation and?
5-0-2.
5-0-2, so sorry. Sometimes I don't hear very well. So thank you very much. Anything else? Thank you for the presenters, Mr. Jass and Mr. Curry and Ms. Scanlon for the Curry Project. And Mr. Lucas, is there anything else we need to conclude our meeting?
No, I'll just mention, since the petitioner had several folks here, this will come back to the full council September the first. And we are anxiously awaiting to see whether the governor will extend the public health emergency. I expect you all will be able to participate remotely either way. But we are still waiting to see what he's going to do and how the council will need to meet in a couple of weeks. So if you need to get in touch with Ms. Scanlon to get in touch with me, I'm happy to talk through any issues you have for that next meeting. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Arrivederci, everyone.
Move to adjourn.
Oh, move to adjourn. Thank you.
Good night, all. Good discussion. Thank you.